Everybody for coming tonight, we'll be starting the meeting. I just want to talk about the meeting format tonight. This meeting will be conducted in a hybrid meeting format. The city council has made investments in technology that now allow us to allow people to participate and view meetings remotely. This format allows the public to view and participate in the meeting through Zoom, in addition to attending in person as those of you in the room are doing. As a result, in order to conduct the meeting in an orderly manner, certain protocols are to be followed. First, the host will keep all participants muted until public comment is requested or the public hearing is opened. The city council will first solicit comment during public comment or hearings from those that are attending the meeting in person, so that means individuals that are at City Hall in person. At the appropriate time, the mayor will host, the mayor or host will specifically solicit public comment from the Zoom participants. Comment will be solicited from those participating via PC phone applications, and then from those that might be participating by calling in. If you wish to speak, please raise your hand virtually. That is how we know that you want to speak. The mayor or host will individually recognize those wishing to speak and will invite you to speak. The host will then unmute your microphone. Your microphone will be remuted once you have finished with your speaking. So, how do you raise your hand virtually? Within the Zoom application, if you go down to where the reactions button is on the menu on the bottom, it will pull up a small options window. Within that options window, there is a raise your hand item. Click on that. It will show a hand in your view box and we will know to call on you during public comment or during the public hearing. If you want to lower your hand, you simply repeat the same process. If you are calling in, please press star nine on your phone to raise your hand. The mayor or host will call on individual telephone numbers and ask them to address the council. Thank you.
All right, with that, we'll call the mean to order. Everyone, please rise for pledge allegiance.
To the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you change this to the agenda?
There are no specific changes or additions to the agenda, Mr. Mayor, but as we've indicated through our public communications, the city council will be asked to table the items under general business this evening. And if the public hearing is concluded related to the application, the two I applications underneath that area, those will also be asked to be tabled this evening as well. However, the city council will be asked to accept public comment on those items.
Any motions?
Motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Motion by Bryce, second by Kate, in favor.
Aye.
Agenda is adopted. You have no presentations, proclamations, or acknowledgements outside of what is planned for general business. So right now, open it up to public comment. So this is not the public hearing. This is the public comment if anyone wants to address the council for anything that's not on the agenda. Please come up to the podium. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Vida Conitz. I'm a resident of New Market Township, and I would like to make a comment regarding water conservation and protecting our water. Would that be appropriate at this time?
That would be, whoops, that would be for the public hearing.
I need to wait for that.
Correct.
Thank you.
Please come on up.
Hi, I'm Jody Lucas. I am an Elko resident. And what I want is to ask a question, just a general question, and it is about the testing of the DNR, and it's not on the agenda, so I looked. And what my question is, is once we get all this testing back and it comes to you, what next? Are you going to have another public hearing with the results? Do you close the doors and vote? What goes on after all that comes together?
So first, any other questions or any comments regarding Niagara, the proposal, anything that's going on with water? We do want to save that for the public hearing, but this case, just for the simple question, we would have another public meeting. It wouldn't be a public hearing necessarily, but we would have another open meeting, another council meeting where we would...
Okay, so we wouldn't have to watch the website to say, hey, the shovel's going in the ground, and you'd have us all and say, this is what's going to happen, either yea or nay?
We would do our best to get the message out. I would still encourage you to keep an eye on city agendas and stuff, just in case.
Right, because we're in town, so we didn't know. My neighbor told me about this, so, okay. That's all I want to know. Thanks.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any comment for anything that's not going to be discussed later? All right. We'll close public comment. We'll go on to the consent agenda. Any changes?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Motion by Kate.
Second.
Second by Bryce, in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Consent agenda passes.
Hold on, Joe.
Oh. Sure.
Larry Schofield, 11550 Deuce Road, Elko. It's a little confusing when I should talk about the impact on neighbors.
That would be during the public hearing, which will be getting to after the presentation.
See you later.
Hi, my name is Deb Pexa. I'm from New Prague. Can I just ask all of you, I'm sitting in the hall, the other room as well, we can't hear you at all. You need to speak right in front of your microphones. I see people back, because we're not going to be able to hear you. We can hear this one really well, though. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Is this better?
Yes.
All right. Okay, we pass consent agenda, so we're on to general business. So for those in the audience, there, as Tom had mentioned earlier, there is going to be a detailed presentation. That's what we're going to get into now as to what this project is all about. It is going to be kind of a lengthy presentation with a lot of details in it, so please be patient and bear with us. Go ahead.
Just to maybe assist with everybody knowing who is in the room, because I don't know all of you, although I actually know quite a bit of you. We'll just do a quick round so you know who is who in the room, possibly later for answering questions. So maybe we'll start with Seth.
Seth Peterson with Bolton and Mank, one of the city's consulting engineers.
Dave Hume, LRE Water, the city's consulting hydrogeologist.
Lynda Yurok, deputy clerk for the city of Elko New Market.
Bryce Schenke, council member.
Kate Timmerman, council member.
Josh Berg, council member.
Amanda Novak, council member.
Joe Julius, mayor.
Tom Terry, city administrator. Jacob Skleszaczek, planner.
Andrea Hayler, city attorney.
Renee Christensen, city planner.
Rich Revering, city engineer.
Brady Jewell, chief of police emergency management director.
He's the Frees Transportation Services Director.
For Scott County.
Oh, Scott County, yes.
Mike Larson, Bolton and Mank, city consulting traffic engineer.
I have a question about the agenda. Is that something that we can talk about now?
It's a real, real quick question before we get...
Well, it's kind of just a suggestion. I'm thinking maybe instead of like each one of these people doing their presentation in hopes that it's going to answer our questions, maybe we can tell you what our questions are, and then the presentations can actually answer our questions. I feel like the presentations are going to be really long.
They could...
It's going to be a really long night.
We're anticipating it to be a really long night, and I...
I thought, do you think that's a good idea, though?
I'm hopeful that...
Get the questions out there first, so then we know what, so then you guys know what we want to answer, instead of like, how does the bottling plan, bottled water, you know, like, step by step? We don't want to know that.
Okay, well, I'm hopeful that if you're patient, the questions that you do have may be addressed in the presentation, and we've already adopted the agenda, so we can't go back and change the format of it. I'm sorry.
Mayor, can I say one thing?
Yes.
The presentation is also for us as council, too, in order to make a decision. So all the information that's presented is helpful for us, as well as the information that you provide us and the questions and your feedback.
Okay, thank you, mayor. The first item on the agenda is really just a really broad overview and a history of economic development efforts in the city of Elko New Market, specifically regarding the I-35 interchange area. Really just a lot of history, as well as the history of our interactions with Niagara and due diligence that was done by the city in evaluating this user. So unfortunately, this is going to be long, but it's intended to give the greatest amount of background information to not only the public, who doesn't know what we do every day, but also to the council, who may not have been on the council at the time some of these efforts were started. So, really going back as far as 2009, Unified Economic Development Land Use and Transportation Plan was adopted by SCALE, which is a Scott County Association for Leadership and Efficiency. And this was the first coordinated countywide effort to address economic development throughout the entire Scott County, and it created a vision for economic development. The overarching goal of this plan was to develop a strategy to increase employment within the county. Among other benefits created by having businesses located in Scott County, such as diversification of tax base, creating options for residents to work closer to home, reducing travel time, improves quality of life. Most recent Census Bureau information indicates that 99.3% of the workers in Elko New Market leave our city limits to work, and the average commute time most recently is 31.9 minutes. As part of this collaborative effort, in 2011, SCALE conducted a critical review of all areas in Scott County that were guided to commercial industrial development. The properties are mapped, as depicted on the map here, and a team of professionals was assembled to evaluate and determine if these areas were in the right place, given the existing and planned infrastructure, and what the realistic market was for development of these properties in the short term and the long term. Based on the analysis, and there were several professionals, real estate professionals, developers, brought in, commercial industrial developers, to really look at these and went out and did bus tours, and based on this analysis, the top 10 areas for economic development potential were identified and adopted by SCALE. The primary focus, again, of this effort was the potential for job creation within the county. It was agreed by SCALE partners that investments would be focused in these 10 key areas. The I-35 corridor in Elko New Market was identified as one of the top 10 corridors within the county for economic development potential. Specifically noted, it was, it is a southern gateway along a major north-south interstate. It is attractive for distribution and logistics users wanting to stage consumer products to serve the metropolitan area population. This economic development corridor is in the right location, given planned infrastructure. With the I-35 interchange being identified by SCALE as one of the top 10 areas for economic development potential, the city of Elko New Market embarked on its own additional work to evaluate the corridor. The city of Elko New Market Economic Development Strategic Plan was completed and adopted in 2011. The planned findings were very similar to those of SCALE, identifying it as a top area to be targeted for economic development. Based on those, the findings of both SCALE study and the city's strategic plan, the city moved forward with more detailed analysis of the corridor and its potential for economic development and the feasibility of opening up the corridor. The initial assessment included analysis of extending infrastructure to the interchange area, a determination of landowner interest in development or selling, and stakeholder outreach. During this timeframe, an open house was held for area residents here at City Hall in 2013. Following stakeholder outreach, Ryan Companies developed an interest in the property located in the southeast quadrant of the interchange. The city and township subsequently entered into annexation, agreements regarding annexation of the property. An environmental study, an AUR, was embarked upon in 2015, which included two open houses related to a planned industrial development in that area. Open houses were held in January and May of 2015. The city amended its comprehensive plan in 2015 to include property on the east side of I-35 guided for industrial development, which also included public hearings. In summary, laying the foundation for future development around the interchange area has been in the planning process for many years. Now I'd like to just provide you with information about how cities plan for future growth and development of their cities through a comprehensive plan. A comprehensive plan is a document that describes a community's vision of itself into the future. The plan is a compilation of policy statements, goals, values, standards, and maps which guide development, future development of the city. Minnesota state statute gives cities the authority to plan and manage land use according to accomplish the community's goals. So not only does Minnesota statute give authority, cities authority to plan for future growth through adoption of a comprehensive plan, the law actually requires this in the metropolitan area. We do not have a choice about it. We are required to adopt a comprehensive plan that is consistent with regional planning efforts and to update our plan every 10 years to ensure consistency with regional plans. The purpose of a comprehensive plan is to guide growth and development, document the community's goals and values, serve as a communication device, and provide a legal basis for the ordinances and decisions that we make. Many chapters make up a city's comprehensive plan. As you can see on this slide, there are chapters specific to the environment, future land use, housing, housing goals, utilities, et cetera, and implementation, how the city is going to implement these goals. When the cities of Elko and New Market consolidated into a single city in 2007, a new comprehensive plan for the combined cities was adopted. This map shows the proposed growth area and future land uses that were adopted by the city at that time. There was one update to the plan in 2015, which officially added the area east of I-35 to the city's planned growth boundary, and it circled in red on this map. The city limit at that time was depicted in a black outline on the map, and the city's planned 2030 growth area is the colored area beyond the city limits. So those are areas that we could expect to grow outside of the city limits within the foreseeable future at that time through 2030. In August of 2021, the city adopted its updated comprehensive plan, which guides growth and development through the year 2040. This map, again, shows where the proposed growth area and future land uses that were adopted by the city in 2021. There were minor changes to the overall planned growth boundary from the previous plan. Some land located east of I-35 was added to the city's 2040 growth boundary. Adoption of a comprehensive plan is a long and very public process that involves distribution and dissemination of information at several planning commission meetings, input from property owners and community members. There have been claims by property owners recently that the city's growth, planned growth wasn't advertised and wasn't well distributed. This plan was discussed at many planning commission meetings. Community surveys were sent out. Staff prepared prerecorded videos outlining and describing each chapter in the plan, and posted these on the city's website to provide greater community engagement. An open house was held as part of the process. The open house was posted on Facebook. Notices of the open house were mailed to every single property owner in the planned growth area and to property owners whose land use guidance was proposed to change. The notice included the draft future land use map. The city's advertisement of the comprehensive plan, this most recently adopted plan exceeded the minimum requirements under the law to promote community engagement. So Elko New Market is a small town today with a population of less than 5,000 people, and that's probably why many of you moved here. The ultimate growth boundary of the city is shown on this map. This boundary is much larger than the 2040 growth boundary and even reaches into Rice County. The growth area is defined by the size of the sanitary sewer pipe that serves our community, along with geographical features from an elevation standpoint and contours. What can, what area can be served by the depth and the size of that pipe? The area depicted here may not be developed for 50, 100, or even more years, but this map depicts the ultimate growth area for Elko New Market once fully developed, and the community will likely be a population of over 70,000 people. It is inevitable, it is inevitable that the city of Elko New Market will see growth based on our proximity to the metropolitan area and our convenient location on Interstate 35. Using Lakeville as an example, their population has increased dramatically over the past several decades. They grew by over 16,000 people in the last 11 years alone, and in 2021 alone, Lakeville grew by 736 housing units, and has been the fastest growing city in Minnesota for several years. Now, am I saying that we're going to be Lakeville anytime soon? No. Elko New Market is its own unique community with its own identity and attributes, and based on our, but based on our location, we will see growth, including residential, commercial, and industrial. So when does development occur? City growth only occurs when there's a willing buyer, often a developer, purchases land from a willing seller, often a rural landowner. The timing of when a landowner wants to sell is not controlled by the city. The city plans for and prepares for growth in order to promote orderly development through its comprehensive plan, as described in previous slides. The plan is required under state law through a public process every 10 years, and the subject area now proposed, being proposed for industrial development, has been officially designated for future industrial land use by the city for the past seven years, and prior to that, it was designated by Scott County and New Market Township for industrial land uses. The city has been working with two large landowner, property owners adjacent to the interstate for several years, some more than a decade, regarding potential development of their properties, shown in yellow on this map. So both on the east and the west side of I-35, these landowners are willing sellers and interested in selling their property for development. Not only have, has the city been talking to these landowners, but several other large landowners around the community are nearing their time to sell. Significant investments have been made in preparing these properties for development. This map depicts the approximate boundary of the park I-35 property. The property is owned by willing sellers, and Ryan Companies US, a willing buyer and developer, has had a purchase option on the property for many years. Ryan Companies is a national developer and builder of commercial and industrial properties to provide construction, engineering, architectural development, and real estate management services. Ryan Companies does have a history of completing successful projects in Scott County, as well as throughout Minnesota and the country. There have been many concepts prepared over the years showing how the property could potentially be developed. Ryan Companies became involved with the property as far back as 2013, and they were involved with neighborhood meetings and AUR, open houses related to potential development of the property. Ryan Companies prepared a marketing video for the property that has been posted on YouTube for more than seven years. It's also been posted on the city's website for quite some time. So when did the city know about Niagara bottling? There have been suggestions that the city has been intentionally hiding the Niagara project from area residents, and I want to provide you with the information related to not only this project, but how the city commonly responds to various business leads. So how does a city receive a business lead or inquiry? There are multiple ways that the city receives these leads. DEED, which is the state of Minnesota, and Greater MSP, the regional economic development agency, promote business retention and expansion throughout Minnesota and the Minneapolis-St. Paul region. When, when a business is in need of a site or building, they broadcast, the cities broadcast this to the cities around the metro or state, the requirements of the business. If the city has a property that fits the search criteria, the city can submit their site. Elko New Market has submitted dozens of responses to alerts that have come in through the state or regional development agency. Sometimes city staff get direct inquiries through phone calls or walk-ins from businesses interested in locating in the, in the community. Regardless of how the inquiry is received, city staff continues to provide as much information as possible in order for the business to determine if Elko New Market may be the right place for them at the right time. Staff always considers these inquiries to be confidential, just as if any resident were seeking information about a property they were interested in buying, that inquiry would be considered confidential. On November 2nd, 2021, the city received a broadcast alert regarding a beverage bottling company seeking 25-plus acres to construct a new facility. The proposed Park I-35 industrial park met the minimum search criteria stated in the alert, and city staff submitted Park I-35 as a possible candidate on November 4th, 2021. Broadcast alerts always come in under code names to maintain confidentiality for the business. The broadcast alert came in under the codename Project Horseshoe. Greater MSP and Niagara's real estate professional continued to request additional information from the city, primarily regarding utilities that would help inform site selection decisions. Project Horseshoe representative, representatives visited the Twin Cities on November 17th, 2021, to view multiple sites in the Twin Cities and Wisconsin, with a brief stop in Elko New Market. Staff simply knew that this lead was a beverage bottling company at this point, and we had no idea it was a water bottling company. By mid-January 2022, staff was informed by the real estate broker representing Project Horseshoe that the search had been narrowed to approximately four locations. Company officials continued, conducted another community visit on February 17th, and again on April 20th, with the purpose of continuing to obtain information to inform their site selection. City staff simultaneously evaluated the potential impacts and benefits of Project Horseshoe to the city. In late June of 2022, staff received word that Niagara would move forward with site negotiations with Ryan Companies. During those preceding months, between January and June, the city was conducting rate and financial analysis related to the project, both internally and with outside financial consultants. We were consulting with our city engineer to determine if there were any upgrades would be needed to our city infrastructure. We were consulting with a hydrogeologist to determine if there would be impacts to the aquifer. We conducted preliminary property tax revenue research, et cetera. In late August or early, I think it was early September, staff came to understand that an agreement, a purchase contract, had been reached between Ryan Companies and Niagara. an agreement, a purchase contract, had been reached between Ryan Companies and Niagara. Both Ryan Companies and Niagara submitted land use applications to the city on September 30th, with the hopes of being on an October 28th Planning Commission meeting. The applications were determined to be incomplete, primarily because of a missing tree inventory information, and the applications were resubmitted on October 30th. They were subsequently, subsequently scheduled for a November 29th Planning Commission meeting. So not only did Parker, Park I-35 site meet the criteria identified by Niagara, but the project also fulfilled goals and objectives contained in the city's comprehensive plan, as well as annual goals adopted by the city council. Every year, the city council adopts annual goals, and every year since I've worked here, those goals have included statements of advancing shovel, shovel-ready sites, guided for commercial industrial development, develop a more diverse tax base, create more local employment opportunities, promote additional businesses, et cetera. So. Why would the city pursue this project? Long and short, the project provides met go, goals that are identified by the city. Growth and diversification of the city's tax base, local employment opportunities, a catalyst for other commercial industrial development, gets the industrial park off the ground, and there's a financial benefit to the sewer and water utility funds. We did talk about some of the due diligence done by the city, but we're going to get into greater detail on some of these due diligence in the following slides. The due diligence we did in evaluating the needed water system improvements, if any, or at what stage, fiscal impacts to the city, both in utility funds and property taxes. We evaluated the transportation impacts of this project, aquifer impacts, and conducted research on the company, on Niagara Bottling. So tonight, this is just, I'm just going to give a brief overview of the project itself. Most of you, I believe at this point, are very familiar with what this project is, but the applications that the city has received is for a preliminary plat application and a rezoning. It's a request for preliminary plat approval of the Park I-35 industrial park. It contains 119.39 gross acres. At this point, the plat would contain one lot that is 28.09 acres, where Niagara Bottling is proposed to locate, and three outlots. One that would be dedicated to the city for stormwater retention, and two that would be retained for future development. The property is currently inside the city limits, again, and there's a request for rezoning on the Niagara Bottling parcel, to rezone it to I-1. This is a location map showing the location of the overall plat, adjacent to I-35 and County Road 2, southeast quadrant. Moving on to a little description of the Niagara Bottling project. Niagara Bottling is an American beverage manufacturer. They are proposing to construct a 425,000 square foot facility on proposed Lot 1 in the industrial park. Of that 425,000 square feet, there would be approximately 10,000 square feet of office space. The following uses are proposed within the building, manufacturing of plastic bottles and caps, treating, testing, and bottling of water, and possibly other beverages in the future, warehousing and distribution of bottled beverage products, and accessory office use. All of these uses are permitted uses within the I-1 zoning district. There are significant water requirements for the project. For Phase 1, which includes two production lines, 425,000 gallons per day of water, and 85,000 gallons of sewer discharge, and that would be discharged to the Metropolitan Council's wastewater system. There is a possibility for a Phase 2, which would include two additional production lines, which would just double those numbers. So the, if they expanded the plant in the future, that would be up to 850,000 gallons per day of water use and 170,000 gallons of wastewater discharge. There are also electrical and natural gas requirements that, you know, the city coordinated with our economic development partners at those agencies to determine that their needs could be met in terms of electrical and natural gas requirements. This map, again, shows the location of the proposed Niagara parcel within the Park I-35 plat. At this time, I would like to call upon Seth Peterson, engineer with Bolton &amp; Mankin. He is going to run through the water system improvements. Actually, if you could approach the podium, Seth. And. Of all speakers at the podium, and you can just use this arrow to advance your slide.
Thank you, Renee. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just and for the audience here, my, again, my name is Seth Peterson with Bolton &amp; Mankin. I'm an environmental engineer, so I work on water and wastewater treatment. And so we've gone through this a little bit before in the past of looking at what your water system improvements would be. Your existing infrastructure is based on, the water system is supply, storage, and treatment. You have currently three wells, production wells. You have two elevated storage tanks. You have one reservoir at the water treatment facility, and you have your water treatment facility where you're removing iron and manganese and then pumping out to the distribution system. I think the key thing to remember with your existing infrastructure, the city's done a very diligent job of building a resilient infrastructure, an infrastructure that's set for the future and for growth. And so by doing that and having that foresight, your existing infrastructure can serve Niagara now and development, but it will use up that available capacity that you guys have built into your system. With the supply, so we look at each thing, this is just with Niagara that we have in here, and when we look at supply, we look at maximum day demand. And so that is the key thing we look at. It's a very conservative way to look at it, because maximum day demand, you only meet it a couple days in a year, a few days a year. But that's what we designed for, it's a very conservative way to do it. As we look at this, there are a couple different scenarios. With this scenario, we're looking at the most aggressive scenario with Niagara coming online in, I think, September of 2023, and then doing their second phase, starting in August, that would come online in August of 2024. So we're looking at what that impact would be, that would be the quickest, this would happen. And as you can see, you get right up to your, meeting your current supply there with this line. The, the purple line is the firm capacity, that means one of your wells is out of service. The orange is your total capacity, so you still have plenty of total capacity with your current well supplies, but you are eating up some of that available space that you have with your system. This is looking at storage, with your storage, and this is again with Niagara, you look at average day, just, those are the different engineering things we take a look at. Again, you can handle Niagara with your current storage, but again, you're going to use up some of that existing capacity. With your treatment facility, the treatment facility looks at the, really, the, the, the main piece of the treatment facilities are the filters, that's what controls kind of the rate of flow through the facility. We look at different rates of flow through that, from two gallons a minute per square foot up to three gallons a minute per square foot. As you can see, you eat, you, you meet the existing capacity with Phase 1 and Phase 2 at your current facility, but again, you're consuming that existing capacity that you have built into your system. So the recommended improvements that we have laid out with this, with Niagara coming, potentially coming in, would you'd have a new well, estimated 800 to 1,000 gallons a minute. Your existing wells are all 850 to 1,000 gallons a minute, so very similar, new well that would go in, providing again, that firm capacity for your system. We're looking at a new water tower here, 1 million gallon storage tank to provide more uniform pressure and flow throughout the system. And then also eventually, you're going to need some improvements at your water treatment facility also. Should be noted that all these improvements were going to be needed at some point anyway, regardless, because as the city was going to continue to keep growing, you're going to need to add new wells, new storage, and do improvements at your water treatment facility. So this is looking at what happens when you add in a new well, where you end up, and so this is by adding a new well, we're assuming an 800 gallon a minute well, that should be on the low end of what we're going to achieve here. And again, you're going to meet that, have that firm capacity, and you're going to have enough out until 2033 where you need to start looking at another well. And that's very typical of growing communities. You put in infrastructure, and then you meet up with it at growth, and you keep planning for that as you do that in the future. So that's with a new well. This is the gain in capacity with a new 1 million gallon storage, that takes you out to 2040 with your projected growth. And then with the water treatment facility, again, that takes you out to 2040. The recommended schedule here, this is just one we would look at when you should start looking at adding a new well, and really, the well and the storage fall pretty much on the same line as this, as you look at this. The new well, start the planning for that now. As you see, you'll move through design, then there's agency approval that we have to go through, then obviously the construction of it, and then operation. So starting now with planning, operation of that coming in summer of 2024, that would be before that second phase of Niagara. Same thing with the new water tower, looking at planning now, but that construction, just because of the timeline, takes a little longer, the operation would be in spring of 2026. And then the water treatment facility is a little bit farther behind, just because there's some additional built-in capacity there. So that's starting planning next year, and then coming in operation with that in spring of 2028. And so with that, any questions?
I have a couple of questions.
I think we're okay.
Okay, great.
I got a couple of questions.
Oh, sorry, the Zoom isn't working.
Yeah, I had just heard that, the Zoom.
So I would just maybe make that announcement, because my phone's going crazy over here.
So we had purchased 300 additional licenses.
Yeah.
Zoom had confirmed with us that we had those licenses.
And it's just not working.
And it was upgraded, and so it's an error on Zoom's side.
Okay.
It might help if all of you up here log off of Zoom, because it shows that you're all sitting on a Zoom, taking up a seat.
Go ahead.
Can I ask a question about this?
Has anybody called like 1-800-ZOOM-TechSupport? They could probably fix this problem fast.
We just found out about this within the last couple minutes.
Can I ask a question about these tables?
I'm sorry?
Can I ask a question about the presentation?
Can you wait until the presentation's been completed?
Well, I mean, I just literally about this part of the presentation, so by the time, I mean, you know, we're done.
We're, we're going to get through this presentation, and then we're going to open it up to the public hearing, and then we can hear everything at that time. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Tom Terry, I'm the city administrator. I'll be talking about the financial aspects of the project. So of course, anytime you have a large user that has impact on your utility systems, there's key questions that you have. First one is, can you serve it and how would you serve it, which was covered under the presentation from Seth? And then the other question is, how do you finance it? What is going to, financial impact is going to have for the city? So with this project, we will be receiving one-time fees. These are paid at the time of the development or associated with development. We'd be looking into the water fund revenues, a little over $500,000, and we'd be looking into the sewer fund revenues in the area of $260,000. Those revenues that we receive at the time of development help us build out the system, pay for existing debt service, and help us pay for future debt service as we build out the system. If we look at the annual estimated utility revenues from the project, based on the information that we have received from Niagara, that they anticipate for usage with this facility, we believe that the water fund would receive about, close to $860,000 a year into the water fund in revenues, and a little over $240,000 a year into the sanitary sewer fund, and we're estimating a little under $3,000 a year into the stormwater fund. Those numbers would essentially double for water and sewer if they expand production with a second and a, or a third and a fourth line within the facility. Stormwater wouldn't change, because the exterior nature of the facility wouldn't change at all. So we did take a close look at the impact within our financial model. So the city utilizes a utility fund financial model. We've utilized and refined this model since 2006. It includes input assumptions related to current and future operating expenses, current and future debt assumptions, utility fee rate and rate assumptions. And of course, when you're talking about operating expenses and revenue expenses, you're looking at estimates related to future growth. So that model's used to evaluate projected cash flow and reserve projections within the fund, and we can look at various scenarios and identify what we believe the impacts would be. And we go through this process on an annual basis to varying degrees. We do a really deep dive in the fund every few years, and then in the intervening years, we still do a maintenance review with regards to our rate analysis. In fact, we did a deep dive on this actually just last year. So when we did this, we took our base existing model that we have been using, and we added in assumptions related to Niagara. Now, when Seth gave his presentation, he was using aggressive timeline. I want to make it very clear to the council and to the audience, Niagara has not said that they're doing a Phase 2, they haven't given us timing of it, but for purposes of the model, we used, because of the timing for construction, a very aggressive model to test everything when we went through the process. So I want to make it clear that is not a Niagara timeline, that is our assumptions that we used internally. So the base assumptions would be the Phase 1. The water base fee REUs, and I'll talk about REUs, but that's equivalent to the base fee that's paid for every single family home. So if they're equivalent to 1,500 single-family homes, they'd pay 1,500 base fees. We're expecting that they would use 425,000 gallons per day. We're expecting that the sewer base fees would be equal to 310 homes, and the sewer usage per day, gallons of effluent per day, would be 85,000 gallons. Within that Phase 1, we also made assumptions related to increased operational expenses associated with the water production, and also cap, the capital investments that Seth talked about in his presentation. So this would be the new well and water tower. We also looked at the implements, implementing Phase 2, if that occurred on the timelines that were used for the engineering analysis, that would basically double all of the numbers related to the REUs and the gallons per day, both for water and for sewer. We also looked at, again, increased operational expenses that would be associated with the water production, and the additional capital investments, which would be expansion to water treatment facility. So long and short, what did we get out of it? If you look at the chart on the left, and I am going to move away from the microphone, I'm sorry for people, I will speak really loud, but I think it's easier if I can point. Can everybody hear me all right when I talk this loud?
No.
Okay. Then I'll try and do it up here, and I'll try and.
We can't see because the presentation is on, and so there's no way for us to actually, if you're following along with the dots, everybody down here can't, and everybody in there can't see anything.
Thank you, ma'am. Yep, thank you, ma'am. So I'll try and illustrate it narratively. So if you look at the, the chart on the left, this would be our base model, and does not include a significant industrial user. You'll notice that there are lines on the chart. There's an orange and purple line, the orange line's covering it up. Those are minimum reserve balances. One is dictated by the loan we receive for our current water treatment facility through the public finance agency that we're required to maintain. And the purple one that lies basically right underneath it is the minimum reserve balance that we're required to have via policy. Your minimum reserve balances are there to help you just basically cash flow, and to give you some level of buffer and resiliency within your fund for the unexpected, unexpected expenses, unexpected changes in your assumptions in your model, unexpected drops in revenue, et cetera. When you're looking at the model and with the projections, we build in those capital projects that we know of today with estimated costs. And so you want that light blue line, which is the projected fund balance, to be going upwards slightly, because you're building reserves to be able to handle these unforeseen future items, but you're also building those reserves. Remember, we talked about the development fees we were collecting, so that you can pay for those capital expenditures that you're collecting the fees for. So you're building those reserves to be able to pay for it. In a healthy fund, you will have an upward track. In this particular situation, under our current assumptions, we do believe that the water fund will improve. I'll be perfectly honest, the council's aware of this based on past analysis, but with audiences listening, our utility funds have run pretty close. Our utility funds have run pretty close, pretty narrow, actually below in recent years, those minimum fund balances. We have reached a point where we're projected to begin to have healthier fund balances, but it's not exactly stellar performance, but it's solid. One thing we have to keep in mind is with the no SIU, Seth had indicated that we would have to do those projects eventually. They're off the chart, they're further out, we have those expenses, but we don't have a significant industrial user to help pay for them. When you look at the chart on the right, this includes the scenario that was laid out by Seth with regards to the public improvements that we need to make. We've incorporated the expected revenues that we'd be getting off the project. And so it's the net of the increased expenses, both for operations and for capital with the increased revenues. You will notice that that light blue line performs much, much better. So your first question I would ask is, hey, Tom, that's a, that's a pretty steep line. Well, what that means is that we're actually building those reserves. We're building them much, much more rapidly than we would have at any other scenario. And that, what does that do? That gives us capacity to have resiliency against unexpected negative financial circumstances. For example, what if all other development in the community stops for a period of time due to the real estate market? What happens if our operating expenses increase significantly in an unexpected way? That gives us the ability to buffer that. And that buffering allows us to still control our utility rates and not shift those unexpected negative circumstances onto our rate payers on the system. It also allows us to be able to possibly do more positive things with our rate structure, provided that we don't have any negative items happen over time. Long and short, it gives us more flexibility, it gives us more control over rates, and it puts us in the best position to do, make good decisions that will benefit our rate payers on the system over the long term. When you look at the sewer fund, you see a very similar trend for similar reasons within that fund. So overall, what can you conclude from this analysis? Well, based on the assumptions that there would be sufficient revenue from the utility base and usage fees that we demonstrated, we would be able to cash flow the debt service for the capacity improvements that were talked about by the city engineer. Also, a significant user would improve the long-term financial health for the utility funds and help mitigate certain inherent risks. Example would be lower than projected residential development than we have in the current model. What happens if we have no significant industrial user? We still have all of the same inherent risks that we would have with the significant industrial user. But long and short, we don't have anybody to help pay for those improvements. So one of the questions that we have received and we've seen on social media is questions related to the utility rates. The significant industrial user rate that we gave on the usage side for water and sewer to the utility user. And being blunt, there's a lot of information out there and a lot of it's not necessarily correct. And the other thing that was apparent is a lot of people really don't understand how the pricing structure works for utility bills. And so I'm going to start with just a brief explanation because while our residents might have an understanding, people that aren't residents of the community or may live in the township, this may not be something that they're familiar with. So the monthly water utility bill, and I'm just going to stick to the water side, but all of this is applicable to the sewer side of the bill, consists of two fees. There's a base fee and the usage fee. The collection of the base fee is intended to cover fixed costs on the system, which includes some operational costs, some capital costs. The usage fee is intended to cover operating costs associated with the volume of water that's pumped. So those, the stuff under the base fee is stuff that doesn't matter whether you pump 1 gallon or 100 million gallons, you're still going to have those costs to operate the system. The usage fee are going to be fees that are related to the volume. If the more water you pump, the more those costs are going to go up. So what does a home pay? Your typical single-family home. They're going to pay a monthly base fee of $34 under our current fee schedule. In addition to that, there are tiered fees, there's a set of tiered fees based on the amount of water they use. Tier one is everything from 0 up to 10,000 gallons. There's a typo there, I just noticed. And that's charged at $2.86 for every 1,000 gallons up through the first 10,000. Between 10,000 and 20,000, the water in that range is $5.72. It's progressive, so you're still paying 2.86 for the first 10,000, but the next 10,000, you're paying 5.72. And then for usage above 20,000 gallons, you're paying 11.44 for every 100,000 gallons. So how does it work for a commercial institution or industrial user? The payment is proportionate. Commercial industrial users pay a proportion amount of fees, both on the usage side and on the base fee side. Let's use a real-world example. Eagleview Elementary has been determined to be equivalent to 6.2 ERUs or equivalent residential units. So every month, they pay 6.2 times the base fee of $34. They also pay in tiers, but those are adjusted accordingly. So if they're 6.2 ERUs, their first tier is 62,000 gallons or 6.2 times the 10,000 gallon tier one limit. And that similar adjustment is made for tier two and tier three levels. So what about a significant industrial user? Well, they still pay the base fee. They pay the same proportionate base fee as every other user on the system. For phase one, based on the information that we've received from Niagara, they're estimated to be equivalent to 1,551 homes or ERUs. So what does that mean? Niagara would be charged proportionately. They would be paid the equivalent of 1,551 base fees on a monthly basis, $34 times 1,551. Phase two is equivalent to be 30, is basically doubling. So it'd be equivalent to 3, 3,102 ERUs based on the information we have today. So again, $34 times 3,102. So the usage fee, and this is where we do have a different rate structure for significant industrial users. So Niagara would be charged for a significant industrial user or usage rate of a buck 48 per, per 100,000 gallons. That is less than the rate for a normal home.
For thousands.
For thousands.
A hundred thousand and it says a thousand in the.
Thousand, sorry.
Well, which is.
A thousand.
It's, it's what's on there. I apologize. So only industrial users exceeding 1,500 ERUs qualify for this rate. And as everybody would imagine, the only significant industrial user we have in the community is Niagara. So why the reduction in rates? It reflects the economy of scale of the water usage by the significant industrial user. So the next question is, how is that achieved? Imagine this, you have a single user, a single count to maintain with one pipe in and one pipe out. At 1,551, that's equivalent to the number of homes that we have in our community today. You don't have to maintain the equivalent infrastructure that we have throughout the entire community on the water and sewer systems for the distribution system. You don't have to do all the locates through the development of that. And you don't have to do all the maintenance for locates, maintenance, daily maintenance, account management for 1,500 accounts over the course of it. It's very efficient. So the amount that we, our costs to produce that water relative to the volume they're producing is significant, significantly less than it would be for the single-family home or the equivalent 1,500 homes. And so they receive a break for that. So the other question that we get is, well, how come you don't have a tier two? You only have one level. And at this point, it's really a function of math. If everybody recalls the example I used with Eagleview Elementary, that they're equivalent to 6.2 homes. And if you multiply 10,000 by 6.2, it's 62,000. If we applied the same number to Niagara, they would, that, their tier one limit would be 15.5 million gallons per month. And their projected usage is only 12.9. If at some point in the future, they started to regularly exceed the tier one, the city council could reevaluate whether or not there needed to be a tier two. But at this time, it's not expected to occur or occur on a regular basis. Renee?
Can I ask when the ordinance of the rates were voted on? And when was that passed?
Ma'am, you'll have your opportunity to ask these questions when we open the public hearing.
Next, I'll review the property tax impacts related to the proposed Niagara project. So the city, I forwarded the proposed Niagara site and building plans to the Scott County Assessor's office and asked them to provide an estimated market value for the facility as proposed. The estimated market value is one factor used to determine property taxes. Based on the information provided to the, to the city and in turn to the county assessor's office, they determined a potential range in value for the real estate of 30 to 37 million dollars. This includes the land and building. A final determination of value can only be made following construction of the building. But this is the range that is given us based on the best available information. With this information, city staff is able to plug these valuations into a commercial and industrial tax calculator, which is provided to the city by Scott County annually. This, these spreadsheets shown on this slide show the estimated property taxes and broken down by each taxing jurisdiction based on the range in value. These are estimates provided based on payable 2022 taxes, but this is the best available information. So you can see if on the proposed $30 million estimated market value, total property taxes are 1.028 million dollars. That's broken down between city, school, county, other jurisdictions such as watershed, the state, and fiscal disparities. So on our website, on our FAQ, we had put out, we have, that the project would result in an estimated $175,000 in property tax revenue to the city. There may be, may have been a misunderstanding that that was the total estimated property taxes. But in fact, even in the low scenario, there's an additional 200,000 to the school, another 110,000 to the county, 216 or 17,000 to the state. In the estimated $37 million valuation, the number jumps up to a total of 1.268 million dollars in annual property taxes. So for the city, that would jump up to over 200 or 212,000 dollars, 245,000 to the school district, 135 to the county, and so on. So the estimated property taxes on the low end and the high end, you can see here on the slide. Today, the property of, that the Niagara facility is proposed on in payable 2022, they paid $8,700 in total property taxes to the township. And the total estimated market value for the property was approximately $795,000. So that, this was one piece of the evaluation when looking at the benefits of Niagara. At this time, I'd like to ask Mike Larson with Bolton and Mank to come up. I'm going to unshare my screen and then Mike is going to share his screen.
Yeah, no problem. Renee is still sharing. Okay. Mr. Mayor, City Council, my name is Mike Larson. I'm a traffic engineer with Bolton and Mank. Tonight, I'll be talking to you about our ongoing and past traffic analysis work on the Park I-35 site and more specifically, the Niagara bottling plant development. So some background on the traffic work that's been done to date relating to the previous AUAAR efforts. As Renee mentioned earlier, each of those documents contained a traffic impact study, which considered how traffic on that developed site impacted the surrounding roadways. An original one was drafted as part of the 2015 AUAAR. That AUAAR, AUAAR, excuse me, expired after a five-year shelf life. So it was therefore updated in 2021 with all of the most up-to-date traffic counts, planning documents, the latest and greatest data. Then in 2022, we authored an updated memo specific to the Niagara bottling plant. So you might ask, why do a specific analysis to the Niagara bottling plant when we have these all-encompassing AUAAR and traffic impact studies? Well, it comes down to a matter of scope. The AUAAR and the traffic impact study associated with that development assumed the worst-case scenario on the full Park I-35 site. The resulting trip generation by that full site would result in over 3,500 daily trips upon the opening day of that development. And then upon the full build-out of the site 20 years down the road, over 28,000 daily trips. When we're talking about Lot 1 of the Niagara bottling Park I-35 plat, we're only talking about 206 daily trips upon full build-out of that production plant. So we're doing our due diligence to see what happens in this gap that we have between a very large amount of traffic to this much smaller amount. So the first thing we do when we kick off a traffic impact study is we need to take stock of what's going on today so we can determine what the, the impacts of a potential development are. So the first and most important thing is collecting traffic volumes at your key intersections in the area. We did that at three intersections, each of the I-35 interchange ramps and then at the roundabout at Pillsbury Avenue. We collected these counts in November of 2021. We counted the number of passenger cars, trucks, pedestrians, and bikes at those three intersections. And we counted 13 hours of data between 6:00 AM and 7:00 PM. Analyzing that data, we can identify the peak periods or when rush hour is. And we found that at these intersections, the two time periods where we have the greatest amount of traffic is between 7:00 AM and 8:00 AM in the AM peak and the PM peak is 4:15 to 5:15 PM. So those two peak hours will be our basis for modeling traffic operations. The next thing we need to do, obviously, we all know the impacts of COVID that it had on society, traffic patterns, traffic volumes. We need to do due diligence to validate that the counts we collected at the end of 2021 are representative and fair when comparing to, I guess, a pre-COVID volume. And the tool we used to do that was MinDOT hosted data on average annual daily traffic volumes. MinDOT has a great database of this data on all roadways within the states. And lucky for us, they collected roadway volumes in the area in 2019, so just before COVID. Those numbers are shown in the blue on the map on the bottom right. And the daily traffic volumes we collected in 2021 are shown in orange. What I see and what's important to note is that all, or nearly all of our volumes are well above the 2020, or 2019 or pre-COVID volumes. So this tells me that our volumes are equal to or greater than pre-COVID. So we should have no issue on the impacts of COVID. We also looked at trucks. We know that this bottling plant will produce trucks. So I think it's fair to point out the amount of truck traffic we have on Highway 2. In 2015, we counted that there were 5.4% trucks on the highway or approximately 137 trucks per day. In 2021, with traffic growth, additional industrial growth in the area, that percentage increased to 7.2% trucks or 372 trucks per day. It is important to note that truck volumes have been growing nationwide since COVID, just with more online shopping, things like that. And one important thing to note about truck travel patterns in comparison to regular vehicles, as shown on the graph on the right, the orange line represents the number of total vehicles entering one of our study intersections by time of day. And you'll see there's a spike in the AM peak during the lunch hour. It goes a little bit lower. Then at the PM rush hour, we have another spike. And then the end of the day, it tails down. Whereas trucks, shown in the blue, it's constant all day. There really aren't any speak. There really aren't any speak, peaks. The next thing we look at is a safety analysis of the study intersections. And we do this by looking at data made available by a MinDOT database. We look at the latest five years of crash data. And the crashes that come up on this database are those that are reported to law enforcement. The map on the bottom left shows a number of crashes reported at each of the three study intersections. The two that we'll really focus on are the two ramps where we have 14 crashes at the Western ramps and four crashes at the Eastern ramps. First way, the first method we can use to judge whether an intersection is operating with a safety issue is doing a crash rate comparison. MinDOT has great data on statewide average crash rates depending on size of an intersection, intersection control type, just general characteristics of that intersection. And when we calculate the crash rates at the two I-35 interchange ramps, we find that the East ramps have a crash rate twice the average crash rate statewide. And the Western ramps have a crash rate five times higher than the average crash rate. Now, as a traffic engineer, this tells me we need to look a little bit further on what's going on here. Just being above average doesn't indicate there's a problem just because of the law of averages. We have to have higher intersections. We have to have low intersections. So the way we do that is jumping to a statistical formula with what's called the critical crash index. And all you need to know is that if the index of an intersection is greater than one, it represents a statistically significant crash issue. What we find is that the Eastern ramp has an index of .65 while the West ramp has an index of just above two. So my takeaway from this is that the Western ramp is currently operating with a statistically significant crash issue and there are concerns at that intersection. The next thing we do is look at how our area is operating. And traffic engineers, we grade delays by what's called level of service. It's an A through F scale. The letters correspond to the number of seconds of delay on average per each vehicle entering the intersection in seconds. Level services A through C are acceptable. Things are going quite well. A level service D, there is some noticeable delay, but it's not unacceptable. Level service E and F, the red two, are where we start to see what we'd call failing movements, unacceptable amount of delay to the average user. And what you need to take away from that is a failing amount of delay at an unsignaled intersection begins at 35 seconds of delay. So using those 2021 traffic volumes, modeling the performance at those during the AM and PM peak hours, what's shown here in the circles, the top half is the AM peak hour level of service provided by the intersection and the bottom half is the PM peak hour. And what we see is a lot of green and a little bit of yellow, which tells me everything is acceptable. We do see some delay, but overall, things are operating okay today. In the AM peak on the northbound exit ramp of I-35, that approach does operate at level of service D, specifically the northbound left turn, so northbound to westbound onto Highway 2. That operates with 32 seconds of delay per vehicle, so quite close to a failing level. So the next thing we do is we look into the future. How are things going to perform five years down the road, assuming that there's no Park I-35? We're just looking at background traffic growth due to growth in the city, growth in the county, growth in the region. And MinDOT again has available average annual daily traffic data going back to 1994 on Highway 2. So we can quickly calculate the average growth rate of that projected out into the future. We find a 2.8% annual growth rate in the area. So simply extrapolate that out to 2026 and we've got our future volumes. To put that into context, that would mean an additional 120 to 140 vehicles crossing the I-35 bridge during either the peak hours. So looking at what that added traffic, again, without any Park I-35 development does, we start to see a lot more yellow and a little bit of red. So things are becoming unacceptable after five years of growth. If you remember, the northbound movement at the East ramp was the failing movement in the existing condition. Now we start to see that tick into a level service F, unacceptable amount of delay. Delay on that approach increases by 30 seconds. Specifically, that northbound left turn, you'd have on average 72 seconds of delay per vehicle during the AM peak hour. Elsewhere at the interchange, we're seeing level service D. So between 25 and 35 seconds of delay on average for most movements. So now that we've found out what's going on today without development, we can start to talk about Niagara. The first thing we need to do is to determine how much traffic they're going to generate. Niagara has plants all over the country. They know how these plants operate. So they can tell us exactly how many employees they need, how many truckloads in and out each day. So it makes it fairly simple for us. And what they tell us is that we've got 48 shifts onsite during shift changes. So two 24 employee shift changes. That happens twice a day at 12-hour shifts occurring at 6:00 AM and 6:00 PM. On top of that, we have 110 trucks in and out of the site per day for deliveries, resulting in 206 trips per day generated by the site. To put that number into context, 206 trips per day, an equivalent amount of trips generated by your residential single-unit houses would be about 18 houses. That would generate the same amount of daily traffic. Some other takeaways from a traffic engineering perspective. If the majority of the Niagara bottling plant traffic doesn't occur within the peak hours, there's not a lot of concern because those are the two hours of the day where we see the highest delay, the highest amount of traffic. That isn't the case with our operations, but to be conservative in the analysis that we'll go through in a minute, we assume that the shift changes did happen during the peak hours and 10% of the daily trucks also arrived during the peak hours. So that'd be about 58 trips. In context, adding 58 trips to the traffic seen at the I-35 interchange would increase traffic volumes there by 1.7% during the peak hours. Finally, I think it's important to note that MinDOT has standard thresholds for when a traffic impact study and potential mitigations are required. Those thresholds are for developments that generate 250 trips during a peak hour or 2,500 trips per day. We're well below that, but again, we're doing the due diligence to see what Niagara does to this area since it's so sensitive. So now that we have our background growth and our trip generation by the site, we can add that to our network, add that to our model and determine what that does to delay. So you'll notice that the colors and the letters are all exactly the same here. But it doesn't take a traffic engineer to say if you have more traffic, you'll have more delay. We do see an added 10 seconds of delay to that northbound ramp in the AM peak hour. And then similarly, at the West ramp during the AM peak hour, we see an added four seconds of delay. During the PM peak hours, we see the same amount of delay. And that just comes down to what the dominant movements are at the intersection during the PM peak hour. To compare that one step further, overall delay. So on average, every vehicle entering these intersections, how much, how many seconds of delay would the average person experience during the peak hour? I'll start during the AM peak hour. At the East ramp, without any Niagara bottling traffic, we'll see on average 13 seconds of delay for every vehicle entering. With the added Niagara bottling traffic, that increases to 14 seconds of delay. At the West ramps, without Niagara, we've got 10 seconds of delay on average per vehicle. And then with Niagara traffic, we're adding two seconds up to 12. During the PM peak hour at both intersections, we're staying exactly the same. So conclusions from our traffic impact study analysis. There is an existing safety concern at the I-35 Western ramp with that critical index being above one. The interchange does operate acceptably today, but will begin to fail with background traffic growth alone. Most Niagara traffic is not expected to occur during the peak hours and is below the standard traffic impact study thresholds. Background traffic growth adds twice the amount of traffic to the area of the interchange when compared to the Niagara-generated traffic. And without background growth and Niagara traffic, there is no anticipated change in level of service at either of the interchange ramps. Any questions?
I think we're okay.
Thank you.
I have a question. I have a question. On the study, is that just phase one, those numbers are phase one and phase two?
We'll get to that.
Make your turn.
I think they're asking of council.
Questions, not us.
Yeah, we're not, we're not, we're not giving.
That's correct, right?
You can be done with this part.
Okay, there we go. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm Dave Hume with LRE Water, representing the city as the consulting hydrogeologist, working through Bolton and Mank, the city engineer. And I'm here to talk to you tonight about the Cambrian Ordovician aquifer, which is also kind of referred to not just locally but regionally as the Jordan aquifer. That is the aquifer that supplies the city's current wells as well as what will be supplying the additional demand. I've been a consulting hydrogeologist for over 20 years in the Minneapolis-St. Paul area, working on high-capacity wells within the metro area, groundwater resources that supply those, as well as throughout Minnesota and the Upper Midwest. So a little bit about the Jordan aquifer and what we're going to talk about. The regional extent, touch briefly on that. Then we'll talk about the annual use comparing the statewide use of the Jordan versus what the city is proposing to use. We'll focus in on the local hydrogeology of the area around the city and the surrounding counties. We'll look at groundwater levels kind of in this area. And then we'll look at some pumping volumes that are, you know, not just proposed by the city, but other communities and industries and agricultural users in the area. The last thing I'll talk about is a very preliminary aquifer capacity evaluation that we completed back in June. Again, the city doing their due diligence to authorize that study, again, through Bolton and Mank. And then I'll hand it off to Seth Peterson with Bolton and Mank. And he will talk about some of the regulatory things that protect the resource as far as permitting goes. So the extent of the Jordan, very widespread aquifer extends from the Twin Cities basin all the way through southeast Minnesota, Iowa, Wisconsin. Not shown on the map, it also extends into Illinois and Missouri. So very extensive, very prolific aquifer that provides a lot of water to municipalities, agricultural users and industry throughout the region. The three formations that make up the Jordan, not just in this area, but throughout the region, are defined as the St. Peter Sandstone. That's the uppermost unit. That is underlaid by the Prairie de Shane group, which is a very thick fractured limestone bedrock. And then underlying that is the Jordan sandstone. So those three units make up the Jordan aquifer. They're all connected hydraulically. And again, they provide a significant amount of water throughout the Upper Midwest and the Twin Cities area. Now, the critical part about the Jordan in this particular area and as you move farther to the south and in other parts of the country is it's considered a confined aquifer. And I'll talk about that in a minute relative to an unconfined system and how that plays in relation to water levels and head pressure. And when you pump that, what happens? So let's look at the total volume of water from 2021. Have a little typo in there. So 2021, this comes from the Department of Natural Resources Water Permitting Database. And throughout the state of Minnesota, there's 91 billion gallons of water pumped from the Jordan. And that's all users, agricultural, municipal, industrial. Based on what the city is proposing with the increased demand is 365 million. So basically, 0.4% of that is what the city is requesting from the DNR. And that includes current use plus the future use. So I mentioned confined aquifers and how they're characterized and the importance of them in this situation. So here's a schematic on the right that would represent the Jordan aquifer and the surrounding hydrogeology of the city and the Twin Cities area. If you look at this middle gray-blue area, that would be considered the Jordan aquifer, okay? And above that, you have confining units which are characterized by a lower permeable clay or shale that protect that, but it also allows water to infiltrate and provide recharge. When you drill a well into a confined aquifer, which is represented by those vertical lines there, you'll see the water level rises above the top of the aquifer. It's under pressure. That indicates a confined system. Now, the water that recharges that system, again, comes from leakage from those confining layers above and below in addition to recharge from infiltration of precipitation. Okay, so we have several sources of recharge that continually replenish that system. Now, if you pump a well in a confined aquifer, you pull water out of storage, comes out of the fractures, out of the pore space in the sandstone, and you create a small cone of depression around that well. It's being provided by storage, okay? The difference is when you turn that well off, the water that's in storage fills that void space right back up. And under a sustainable situation, water levels will come right back to where they were before, okay? So let's look at a cross-section, B-B prime, okay? We're going to take a slice through the aquifer, okay? That runs from B to the northwest and extends to the southeast. And this goes through the city wells and generally through a majority of the city, okay? And some areas outside of that. This was developed by the Minnesota Department of Health as part of the Wellhead Protection Plan. And it was based on actual geologic logs, okay? Or drillers' logs that were provided and in the geologic database. So here's a cross-section, again, this is a slice running northwest to southeast. And again, the vertical lines or shapes you see there represent different wells. Shallow wells are typically smaller diameter. Those are the narrow lines. The larger diameter wells, high-capacity wells.
Question?
I just want to let folks know that it looks like the limit is now above 100, so.
Good, okay. So the, the larger shapes you see there that have the blue and the yellow, those represent the city wells, larger diameter wells. And those extend typically or fully penetrate the Prairie de Shane, Jordan sandstone or the Jordan aquifer. And you'll see that, the bottom portion of that cross-section. The private wells typically go into that aquifer, you know, several feet to 100 feet or so, okay? But typically, the large diameter wells will fully penetrate to gain the most capacity as possible. as possible. When those wells are drilled, the driller had noted a water level on those in each well. And if you remember the confined aquifer, when you penetrate that aquifer, the water level rises in the well based on that pressure in the aquifer. And those blue lines you see with the little blue triangles represent the static water level or the non-pumping level when the well was installed. Based on those levels, there is hydraulic head or pressure that rises 140 feet above the top of the aquifer. Okay? So that represents the hydraulic head or pressure head that is in the Jordan aquifer. The total thickness is about 220 feet of saturated material. And in no time, under this scenario that we evaluated, when you pump that Jordan aquifer, does the water level drop below the top of the aquifer. And that's an important criteria. That's something that the DNR evaluates when they're looking at thresholds and sustainability. So we know what the water level is at the time of drilling, when those wells were installed. And the city continues to take those measurements on a regular basis. So we wanted to say, well, what does it look like if you go outside of the city over long term? Do we have any data historically to tell us what water levels do under different precipitation events, drought? So the DNR has an excellent database for water level measurements, and they've got two wells within the proximity of the city that we show here. One is to the northwest, and the other is to the southeast. So the one to the northwest, the data for that well is shown in the graph to your upper left. It's a hydrograph that shows groundwater elevation on the vertical axis, and that goes from 920 to 970 feet elevation, so about a 50-foot interval. And along the bottom is the date. So that graph on the left is over a 40-year period, okay? And the blue line that cuts across that from about 930 to 940 represents the water level measurements that were collected by the DNR. And what we see is, over that 40-year period, even with precipitation varying from 40 inches to 20 inches a year, including some drought conditions, water levels more or less remain stable, maybe fluctuated within 10 feet, but have remained within 930 to 940. And when you see recharge events comparing to precipitation, again, on that green line, you'll see when precipitation increases, you'll see a slight delay, but then you see water levels increase. Okay? On the right side is a graph of a well located southeast of town. Okay, again, same Jordan aquifer, same 50-foot interval from 920 to 970. And you'll see there, it's even fluctuated less, okay, over a period of about seven years. Now, granted, it's not the 40-year period. The data period doesn't go back that far for that well, but over a seven-year period, you're seeing water levels more or less remaining stable. So let's take that graph on the right, and we want to zoom out. Okay? So what I want to show with this graph is, well, how does that fluctuation we just saw in that observation well to the southeast, how does that look relative to how much head pressure we have above the Jordan, where the elevation of the top of the Jordan is? And do we see that fluctuation, you know, nearing any point of a threshold issue or dropping below the top of the aquifer? So instead of the 50-foot interval over here on the left side and the vertical side of the graph, this is a total of 540 feet, okay? So from ground surface all the way down to the bottom of the aquifer, okay, is 540 feet. We have the 140 feet of available head or head above the aquifer. That's where that blue line is, that horizontal line that goes across. That represents that water level in that observation well. And if you project that to the city, or where we're seeing the information on the Jordan here, you'll see that you still have 140 feet of head above the top of the aquifer, and that water level has remained relatively stable. It's almost a flat line. Okay? So we're not seeing swings of 80, 100, 200 feet just because of changes in precipitation and recharge. So what about other users in the area? Okay? And this would be municipal, agricultural, and how do they compare to what the city is proposing or what they're looking for for a new demand? So we looked at Lakeville, Faribault, Northfield, and the combined ag irrigation in the three adjacent counties. And you'll see that Lakeville, okay, is basically 2.5 billion gallons a year, okay? And this is, this is, you know, from 1985 up until present. So you're seeing significant growth, okay? With Lakeville being at 2.5 billion. If you look at Faribault, they're at about 1.25 billion a year. Ag, over the last year, that also ranked up to about 1.25 billion gallons a year. Northfield, about 0.5, which has kind of dropped off over, you know, over the last five or six years. And then below that, in the light blue, is the city, okay? And even with the future use at that 365 million gallons a year, which is that blue-dash line projected, it still falls below some of the more significant users in the area. So as part of the due diligence, city was very proactive, along with Bolton and Mank, and authorized LRE to complete a very preliminary aquifer capacity evaluation in June of 2022. So we looked at the rate of about 300 million gallons a year. Very conservative approach. We assumed continuous pumping, which is typically not the case. And based on those results, we see that the aquifer can meet the demand without any impact or impacting significant thresholds that would be established by the DNR. So with that, I'll let Seth come up, and he can talk about how the resource is protected and permitting. Thank you.
So yeah, I'm going to talk a little bit about some of the resource protection that's out there. The DNR, Department of Natural Resources handles all permitting for all new water supply wells. And so, and water appropriation permits are required for all cities with public water supplies. And DNR permits are also required for any user, so municipal or not, that uses more than 10,000 gallons a day or 1 million gallons a year. So that starts to pull in private well uses, irrigation wells, those types of things. And so the DNR is looking at all of this constantly. Also looking at things constantly, the cities are monitoring water levels all the time. The city here, Elko New Market, you guys are monitoring your wells, gathering data like every second. That information is provided then to the DNR, like it is across all the cities. They supply that to the DNR and take a look at that, and that's how they're able to manage the aquifer and the resource. Wellhead protection plans are another protection that the DNR has. Those are things that are required every 10 years, and that's for all public water supplies. Additionally, all water supply plans are required. That's another 10-year requirement for all public water supplies, that they complete these reports. And then water supply plans are also, if you're adding new wells, new wells, you then update your wellhead protection plan. As you look for new appropriations, you update your water supply plan. So you may have to do it sooner than that 10-year period. And the water supply plans here in the metro area, in Elko New Market's considered metro, the water supply plan is first reviewed, then by the MAC Council. They provide their comments, and then they provide those comments to the DNR, and then the DNR finishes up with their review. Which one do I push?
Slide the mouse button down.
Oh, got it.
Sorry.
Oh, there, got it. Okay. So what does the city have for tools for water allocation? As I mentioned before, the DNR water supply plan, there is a whole section in there of what it calls for allocation and demand reduction procedures. With that, the city's indicated that residential is allocation priority one. Commercial, institutional, and industrial would be allocation priority two. So meaning, if you have any type of water emergency, the allocation's going to go to residential first, then commercial, and then nonessential uses would be your third one. The city already has a current ordinance that states the requirements for emergency restrictions. That's up there, highlighted in yellow. City is evaluating additional ordinance language. And then also, the city's evaluating, looking at usage permits that would follow the DNR usage permits for any users that require more than 10,000 gallons per day or 1 million gallons per year. So the city already has an existing DNR water appropriation permit. The city's needed, they're bumping up against that appropriation permit already, so you were in the line to request that, an allocation already, regardless of the potential growth with Niagara. So the city submitted the application for the increase on November 28th. With that, as I mentioned before, the city needs to update their existing water supply plan. It's a typical process that we would go through. And then, as I mentioned, that water supply plan gets reviewed by the MAC Council first, and then from the DNR from there. So with that, any questions for the council? Thank you.
Thank you.
I actually do have a question. The one question I have is, I'm looking at the well index, and so I'm, you know, one thing that's been brought up by many concerned residents in the area is the fact that they'd be concerned about their wells drying up or that they'd have to dig deeper. Looking at the well index, I'm seeing wells as deep as 223 feet to up to, I found some on here that are 400 feet. When it comes to water being taken out by a significant user like this, what impact does it have on those wells with their depth in obtaining water?
Okay, I think I could maybe talk about the technical side, and then I'll have Seth talk about maybe conditions on a permit that maybe would help address that. A lot of the wells that are maybe shallower, that are not in the Prairie de Shane or Jordan aquifer, okay? Typically, they're in shallower sands and gravels, maybe with some clay layers that separate them from the Jordan, okay? So the pumping of the Jordan may not affect those, okay? Because they're almost in a different hydraulic system, okay? But as part of the permitting process, I'll let Seth talk about that, about how DNR kind of addresses that.
Okay. Yeah, as, DNR will take a look at that, and actually, Department of Health, too, as you put in new wells. One of the processes you go through is they have, they require you to do, well, you submit plans and specs, they do their initial review, you submit your revised wellhead protection plan. The other piece is that the DNR, or the Department, DNR and Department of Health will require you to do a pumping test on that new well, and it's a sustained pumping test. Ranges, you don't know, it can range up to a month, Dave, correct? I mean, a month of sustained, continuous pumping, not a typical situation that you have. Your city wells don't run 24/7. They run long enough to supply the water, but they're not typically running 24/7. So you will do sustained pumping tests for up to a month on that well, and you're monitoring everything in the surrounding area with that. And so that's part of that permit approval process that you, is when you drill a new well.
So can I pin that, pin you down a little bit further on that? Are you saying that people that have existing wells do not need to be concerned about having to drill deeper in their wells?
If they're not in the Jordan aquifer, that the Jordan aquifer is confined, as Dave mentioned, and so if they're not in the Jordan aquifer, those will not be impacted.
So this might be a dumb question, but how do we, how do we know about, you know, New Market Township residents?
Yep. So those are all on the well index, and through that process with the DNR and the MDH, we will monitor those wells. So you'll, we will go to wells and monitor their water levels in them through, while you're doing that pumping test. And you're going to look at a certain radius of an area, not dictated by us, dictated by the state agencies that will review that and say, okay, in this area, we need to monitor everything here. And then while we're doing that test, they'll even monitor some, they have some observation wells, as Dave mentioned on a couple of his other figures. We'll be looking at those, too, because those already have water recording devices in them. So they, we can get a little farther reach. We're going to take a little local reach, and that's all dictated through the state agencies.
So I guess I'm not hearing, though, that they have nothing to worry about.
You know, you don't know. If they're not in the Jordan aquifer, that's not an issue.
Please, please.
If they're in it, if they're not in the Jordan aquifer, they're not going to be impacted by this.
Yeah. Well, then it's up to the city to figure out what to, how, you know, where are they located? Are they, you either help them drill a deeper well, or if they're adjacent right next to the city, you might say, let's extend water to them. There are multiple various things that are done with that process.
Thank you. Did you have more, Bryce?
No, that answers it.
Okay.
So part of the applications that the council's considering tonight are applications for public subsidy. There's two programs that the business is looking to access through the state, and while they don't demand any resources from the city other than administrative resources, the city staff's be willing to act as a facilitator or conduit for that. Additionally, city's been requested to provide a subsidy in the form of reduction in the SAC and WAC fees for the project, and Jake will talk about that later in the meeting when he gives his presentation. But the question becomes, you know, if the city's going to facilitate the project, you want to make sure that you're bringing a company to the community that is going to be a good partner for the city. And so you do company research. So as part of our due diligence, city staff contacted other cities across the United States where Niagara has recently opened new facilities since 2015. The focus was on cities with more recent facilities because we wanted to connect with the institutional knowledge in those organizations that likely would have been there through the initial approval process, construction startup, and operation. In our discussions with those cities, we had talked about items such as the volume of water they used, if they had any changes to the volume that they were using. Did they provide appropriate notice and work with the city if they were looking at changes in the volume used? Was there any unforeseen problems that came up through the process or during their operations? And how collaborative was Niagara in the process? In short, how was Niagara to work with? Did they say what they were going to do, and did they do what they said? So responses were gathered from responding cities to reveal, and generally revealed no issues in association with Niagara bottling in their communities from the city's perspective. We know that the nature of the use has sparked controversy in other communities. They may not have located in other communities, but our focus was on where did they actually go? Not speculate what happened, not talk about the controversy about potential opposition, because that's not the reality of what actually happened, but talk to those communities and say, how were they as a partner to the city? And what we found out is it was either neutral, there were no issues, and in a couple cases, they spoke positively about the relationship with Niagara bottling as the city and the
I'm going to review some environmental study requirements. Minnesota rules require that environmental studies be conducted for projects exceeding certain requirements or certain size limits. There are two types of studies identified in Minnesota rules. There are EAW and EIS. The park I-35 industrial development as a whole, because of the total amount of industrial development that could occur within the overall area, required preparation of a mandatory environmental assessment worksheet as required under Minnesota statute 4410.4300. The Minnesota Environmental Quality Board, who oversees the environmental review processes, has determined that preparation of an alternative urban area wide review, or AUAAR, is an acceptable alternative to the preparation of an EAW. And an AUAAR is essentially a hybrid of the EAW and EIS review processes. RGUs, our regulating governmental units, can use the AUAAR as a planning tool. RGUs, our regulating governmental units, can use the AUAAR as a planning tool to understand how different development scenarios will affect the environment of their community before and after development occurs. This process is designed to look at the cumulative impacts of anticipated development scenarios within a given geographic area. An AUAAR has been completed for the Park I-35 Industrial Park and the, and surrounding area, and was approved in 2015. They typically have a approval period of five years, so, because no development occurred within the first five years, the study was updated and adopted in 2022. There was a petition for preparation of an environmental assessment worksheet related to the Niagara bottling project in Elko New Market submitted to the Environmental Quality Board pursuant to Minnesota rules. And the EQB has reviewed that petition and determined it to be complete, and has assigned authority for determining whether the, an EAW will be required to the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources. The DNR is currently reviewing the petition to determine the need for an EAW. The DNR determination must occur within 15 business days, excluding holidays and weekends, but may be extended for an additional 15 days at the DNR request, if approved by the EQB. The city council meeting scheduled for tonight is being held as planned, including all presentations. However, based on the petition for EAW, which is currently under review by the DNR, the city of, the Elko New Market City Council will not be taking any official actions related to the Park I-35 platte, or the Niagara bottling projects set forth in Agenda Items 7A through C, and the general business items related in item, agenda, item number 8A, related to the public subsidy portion of the project. At this point, I am going to invite representatives from Niagara Bottling to give a presentation. I'm gonna unshare my screen. If you're in the Zoom meeting, you can share your screen.
Before that, before we jump into the Niagara presentation, does anyone else on the council have any questions for any of the experts that have provided information? Josh, go ahead.
Yes, no, and maybe I misunderstood at the beginning, too. I thought we were gonna fly through these. I've been taking notes and questions, so, some of these may go back to some previous presentations, so I apologize in advance. One of the questions relates to, when we were looking at, it was a slide, I swear it was you, Seth, maybe? Supply with Niagara, and it was based on 2024 population, and it, it's when it jumps up when we add the Niagara into that. It was based on a population of 6,741 people for 2024, and that's a 35% increase. Do we think that's realistic? And, and what impact, if any, would it have if we flatlined or stayed roughly around our 5,000 population right now?
Well, that number would, I mean, your, your, your usage would come down by that same appropriate amount, and we were using, I believe those are the Met Council numbers for population, and so, that's what we're using, just to try to stay as consistent, and they are very conservative in nature also.
Well, it just jumped out at me, except, like, holy crap. And then, this was, gosh, Renee or Tom, perhaps? And it was talking about turning, or when we have the new wells, oh, no, it was still yours. When we were talking about, we need to add a well, we need to add a tower. I know we have old wells that are maybe out of use. Is there any potential to turn any of them back on, or invest in something like that?
So, we have our eye on that. The issue you'd run into now is the closest well, the distance for the piping that would go, would cost you more than a pipe. But we, or more than a well, I mean. But we are looking at opportunities, for example, as development, can we have that pipe put in economically until we eventually get there? Or perhaps even someday, is there a small package plant that goes at that well to supplement? Those answers aren't determined, but we are aware of that and have considered it. But at this point, it's cheaper to drill the well than to lay more pipe.
Just one thing to add to that, goes back to the other question. Just to clear up if there's any confusion, where we're looking to drill the new wells, and it goes with what Rich just said, you wanna put the new, the well as close to your, because the well is the raw water, that's what we pump, and it goes to the water treatment facility to get treated. So, the well will be close to the existing wells we have in place, and will be near the water treatment facility. So, just understand, that's where we have our other wells, and so, that goes in, these other wells have been pumped for many years with even more water all the time, with the growth you have, with, there's been no indication of, of impacts to other wells. So, this will be located near the water treatment facility, there are no other deep wells in that vicinity, you have to get quite a ways out of the city to be, for you get some deep wells. And so, with that, I would expect minimal impact to any deep wells.
All right, and, and, and again, I'm not the smartest one in this room, so, it, it, but from looking at the timelines and the projections, if we need a new well, when we need a new well, and when the plant would come online and start drawing from everything, it seems like we're delayed by a period of time. Like, the new well that we dig will not be ready in time for operations, and then, maybe you already know where I'm going, or, maybe I just misread the slides or misheard things?
I think so. We don't need to build anything to serve Niagara. We need to build the things to be able to continue to grow after Niagara is fully in place. The well is the soonest one, because we're talking about firm capacity. Firm capacity is your capacity with your biggest well not working. So, basically, we're talking about a backup well, which is, we don't back off in the recommendation just because of that, but you have plenty of well capacity to serve Niagara.
Thank you, you answered my question. And then, maybe the last one, and this is a hypothetical crystal ball type of deal, and good luck. I mean, just curious, you know, those lines looked really flat, or, you know, with the, the aquifer levels from the 930 to 940, or whatever it was listed as, you know, what kind of drought, what kind of event would it take to, to drop that a significant amount? And have we seen anything like that with this particular aquifer, in this particular region? And again, I, you, this is asking you to speculate, which I don't mean to put you on the spot, but...
No, it's a, everybody asks that question, right? And, and trying to predict climate change and drought, right? It's like the weather, right? It's very difficult, and a lot of variables. All we can do is go back and look at the data we have on that one well, past 40 years, okay? I mean, you can go to other parts of the, of the state, and maybe even in the Jordan Aquifer on the other side of the river, but it's not really gonna represent what's happened in this area, right? So, we're trying to find something locally as we can, as local as we can, that represents, you know, what may happen in the future, okay? We got 40 years of data in one well, okay, which is excellent. A lot of times, you don't have that much information, and precip data. So, all we can do is say, you know, over the past 40 years, there's been significant droughts, right? I mean, you know, the late 80s, you know, maybe the mid 2000s, you know, there's been obviously declines, right? You can see that in the precipitation. So, all we can do is project that, and just say, well, okay, this is what's happened in the past, in the future, you know, this is what we can expect. And I think, you know, when you look at what's happened over the last year and a half, you know, with the drought, it compares to what happened, you know, in the late 80s, right? And we're seeing a similar type of response.
As to climate change, we do know that our winters are warmer and should continue to get warmer, based on current climate science, and that we're generally wetter, but the wetness is spikier, so there's more variability, more intense, heavy rains than we usually got, but also some periods of, maybe prolonged periods without rain. So, there's more variability, but trending wetter. That doesn't necessarily mean you can translate that into more groundwater recharge, that nobody has the answer to, but we're not getting drier.
Anything else?
Can I ask one more?
Yeah.
All right. So, kind of back to, you know, we saw the, the current ordinance in there, that city council may adopt something and say something if we decide that it's necessary to limit or restrict, you know, flow, and keep it at residential, or, or whatever. Is there, is there a state kind of safeguard as well? I swear I saw something in the rules or statutes that talked about the state can implement a statewide drought plan, or something like that, and maybe this is me being naive, what is it, what would that actually look like? I mean, is the state gonna get on the horn with all the city administrators, or, or, you know, city councils to say, hey, we're restricting water access, you need to do this, and what if they don't? And, I mean, has it ever happened before? I mean, I'm just trying to wrap my head around the safeguards that might be in place.
Dave, do you know, I, I, yes, the DNR has that, and the state would have those require, the availability to do that. To my knowledge, I've never seen that happen. I've seen water things happen in town where they've had water restrictions. You guys, I believe, had, have odd even and time of day type things. Every city has those types of things, but I've never seen that on a state level.
You good, Josh?
Sure.
All right. Gentlemen from Niagara. Welcome. And thank you for waiting.
I need help from the owner. What's wrong? Oh, we used it.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, staff, and importantly, the residents who are both here at City Hall and attending on Zoom, and other interested parties. My name is Patrick Drynan, I'm a Senior Economic Development Manager with Niagara Bottling, and what we're planning to share tonight is just a very brief company overview and project summary that includes answers to some questions that were posed previously at the Plant Commission meeting at the end of November. So, those questions include, and, and answers will come later in the presentation, questions regarding the distribution area, trucks and employee traffic, the resin pellets in the process, how are we using water efficiently in our process? Are there any operational nuisances related to impacts on neighbors? And also, what is the construction timeline, and how might that also affect construction traffic along Deuce Road in and around the project location? We're also here and able to answer any questions the council may have tonight, and we will return if this does indeed be extended to Tuesday evening, we'll be here in, in person as well. So, for the brief company overview, Niagara Bottling was established 60 years ago, really as an entrepreneurial startup in Southern California by Mr. Andy Paycoff, Sr. He handed over the reins to his son, Andy II, about 20 years ago, and Andy is our current president and CEO. We're still a family-owned and operated company. In terms of our manufacturing capabilities, we really started out as a bottled water, purified bottled water supplier, and our company has grown and evolved over the years. We are now capable of delivering a variety of different beverages, sizes, shapes, colors, and, and tastes, from the standard Niagara bottle on the left-hand side of the screen, which is our half-liter type product, to gallon-sized products. You see fruit-flavored teas, green teas, sparkling, and, and other types of beverages we are now able to manufacture. But just to be clear, the proposed project here in Elko New Market would focus on purified water products only. In terms of our manufacturing efficiencies, I, I may have covered this briefly at the Plant Commission meeting, we are really an integrated vertically, vertically-integrated manufacturing operation within their four walls. The raw materials that come in for our process are the water, that would come in the water meter, that's supplied by the city of Elko New Market, so we would be a water customer and a sewer customer, as well as plastic pellets that would be delivered to the site and stored onsite in silos. I do have a, a little show and tell for you. We do have HDPE, which is the white type plastic, that is injection molded into our caps, and we have PET, which is the clear plastic, that is injection molded into these preforms, which are then heated, and then blown into a bottle shape. In this case, I've got a half, I'm sorry, an eight-ounce bottle in my right hand, where the cap fits both the blown and the preform. So, all this happens within our four walls, we're vertically-integrated. Really, what happens is we injection mold, then blow mold the bottle into its shape, fill it, cap it, place the label on it, moves down the corridor into cases, which are then shrunk wrap, moved over to a pallet, and then, those pallets are stacked and moved over to our warehouse space onsite in our distribution portion of the building. Those are then moved from our site to either a retailer location, or a distribution center by third-party logistics trucking companies. Within our walls, we, we do have advanced purification, we do take the incoming water from the city, we run it through a reverse osmosis process, which essentially purifies it even more, so we're taking drinking water and purifying already good drinking water, and that goes into our finished product. We are subject to third-party audits, our customers do audit us in terms of our water usage, and we also have onsite reviews of all of our operations for efficiency and, and effectiveness. We do have a sustainability team at Niagara that looks at long-term, how we can be more sustainable, innovative, and use power, wind power, solar, we can be more sustainable in all of our processes. And finally, we are really a highly automated production operation within the 425,000 square foot facility that we are proposing. In terms of sustainability, we do have best-in-class partnerships focused on packaging efficiency, which I'll talk about here in just a second. We wanna be good stewards of the water that's incoming and going into our finished products. Our bottles are 100% recyclable, both the cap, which is a number-two recycling, as well as our bottle, the clear plastic, which is a number-one recycling, so, that just gives you an indication of, of the type of materials that go into our packaging. Our company's manufacturing facilities are true-zero-waste certified, which means that most of the waste that's generated onsite is not then trucked off-site and taken to a landfill. Any bottles can be scrapped and reintroduced into the manufacturing stream, so that a true-zero-waste certified factory or, or manufacturing operation more than, it reduces the amount of waste by more than 90% from our manufacturing operations. This next slide here just shows how we are focusing on innovation in our packaging design, and trying to lightweight our bottles over time. Between 2007 and 2021, we reduced the amount of plastic that goes into our finished product by about 46%. So, it went from 13 grams, just over 13 grams, to now just over 7 grams in 2021, and I'm told that, that number has a six in it, in front of it now. So, in terms of light-weighting, the amount of plastic that goes into the finished product has, we've been driving that down through innovation and design characteristics of our finished product. In addition, our Niagara bottle, our, our designed bottle is the strongest lightweight 16.9-ounce bottle, or half-liter bottle, ever produced. Since we created our first PET bottle back in 1998, the current version uses 69% less plastic than our original bottle design. We do focus specifically on packaging research and development through PhDs on staff, and we're also looking at quality assurance and, and innovation in every part of our business. Very briefly, wanted to talk about Niagara cares and our philanthropic outreach efforts. We are, we really do get involved in our communities and give back through international, national, and local community initiatives, particularly with disaster relief and emergency response. In 2022, we provided over 68,000 cases of donated product to disaster relief efforts, not only in Flint, Michigan, Jackson, Mississippi, but in response to hurricane relief efforts, not only in the southern states, Texas, Florida, but also in Puerto Rico. We also have great partnerships with the communities in which we're located in terms of providing product to first responders and being a good corporate citizen. Last year, we had about 200 local community initiative events that were initiated by our plant teams throughout our plant portfolios, and that included volunteer efforts, donations, and giving back to the community. Now, Chris is going to come up and do a quick project snapshot and answer some of those questions that we identified earlier on in the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, staff. I know it's going to be a long night, so thanks for your patience as we go through this. Tom and Renee touched upon quite a few of these items, so I'm going to go through relatively quickly in terms of the project snapshot. It's a 425,000-square-foot facility on roughly 28 acres. Patrick alluded to the job creation numbers last time, roughly 58 to 60 employees at startup with average wages exceeding $60,000 per employee. Our capital investment numbers are projected to be $135 million or thereabouts. Much like the rest of the world, we're seeing price escalations in construction materials and labor costs, so could be slightly higher, could be slightly lower depending on how it plays out. The diversified tax and utility revenue, this is underestimated relative to the numbers that Renee shared earlier. It's about $1 million annually for Phase One, just in water and sewer revenue generation in addition to the state and local tax revenues that would be generated, as well as the roughly $250,000 that would be contributed to your local area schools as a result of this development. A question arose during the Planning Commission about what is the timing for construction and expected construction sequence. Prior to the EAW request that was submitted to the DNR, we anticipated that we would likely be breaking ground in around April of 2023. That would be construction start, and that we would likely wrap up and begin production and operations in early Q1 of 2024. Depending on how the EAW process request plays out with DNR, that may adjust the timeline slightly based on when we're able to start construction. The one highlight from this slide is really the facility layout that was submitted, the site plan. I'm sure many residents haven't had a chance to see this depiction yet, so I just wanted to talk about a couple salient points. First and foremost, Deuce Road is on the north side of that image. It just got cut off there, but I think you can still read Deuce Road in the graph. There is no access whatsoever, permanent access, to the site off of Deuce Road. All access would be from an interior roadway that would be constructed by Ryan Company. The current project timeline assumes that that roadway would be accessible by the end of July of 2023, again, assuming a Q2 construction start for them as well. So that means all vehicle traffic, truck traffic would enter and exit the site from the south, and so there would be no access to the north. So for the residents that live just north of the site, I know that was a question and concern that arose. The area between Deuce Road and the trailer parking that you see on the north side, some of that is a utility easement area. The remainder is land that we hope to transform into what's called a microforest onsite, would provide additional screening, habitat creation, and tree preservation. Sorry, there's a delay between this and the screen. Another question that was posed, what's the distribution area? Are they going to be bottling product here in Minneapolis and shipping it down to California? The answer is no. Bottled water, any beverage for that matter, is very, very heavy. It's difficult to ship. It's costly to ship long distances, and so we're incentivized to reduce what we call the average length of haul or the proximity between our plant operations and our customer base, and that's part of what's drawing us to the greater Minneapolis region, is a desire to serve existing customer relationships in and around Minneapolis and St. Paul. So Patrick mentioned this during the Planning Commission as well, but approximately 85% of our forecasted year-one sales volume would be allocated to customers in Minnesota and just across the border in Wisconsin. Truck and employee traffic was covered very definitely in the traffic impact analysis by staff, but just to reiterate, anticipating approximately 58 to 60 employees at startup, they're split across four production teams. Those teams are staffed in 12-hour shifts that are rotating, and so what happens at a peak shift change, you would have your, call it, 10 administrative or management personnel in the office area in conjunction with Shift A and Shift B overlapping for a shift change. So you wind up with, you know, somewhere in the order of that startup, really, it'd be about 34 people, if I'm doing my math right, 12 from Shift A, 12 from Shift B, and then the 10 management personnel. Those shift changes typically occur at 6:00 AM and 6:00 PM. There's some variability that's allocated to the plant directors so that they can optimize staffing and minimize impact to area rush hour traffic. So some of our plants start up at 4:00 AM and end at 4:00 PM, but the plants surveyed regionally all operate at 6:00 AM or 6:00 PM, occasionally 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM shift changes. Truck traffic for Phase One would be approximately 55 trucks per day on average, so that results in roughly two to three trucks per hour. I know the traffic impact analysis did double that, so it showed 110 trucks per day, and basically they're looking at the inbound movement of the truck coming onsite plus the outbound movement, and that's how you get to 110. I don't think that was referenced in the analysis, but just to clarify that point. If we were to expand and add the third and fourth bottling lines, then the truck traffic volumes would necessarily double to accommodate the outbound finished good shipment. So at that point, you'd be at roughly 110 trucks per day, or the equivalent of four to five per hour, and again, no degradation in service levels, as we've seen from their analysis. In terms of the operational nuisances, the short answer is there are none. Everything is self-contained within the four walls of the operations. We are not converting plastic onsite. We're not making the resin, so there's no odor generation, there's no chemical release, there's no excessive noise either. The only external operations are passenger and truck traffic circulating the site, so there's no external storage of finished goods, there's no external storage of materials. And so for neighbors that live close by, hopefully that provides some degree of comfort in terms of the impacts or lack thereof for operations. With regard to the environmental stewardship and the question about, you know, how are we using water and resources efficiently? Look, we are family-owned and have not closed any of our bottling operations that were purpose-built for Niagara, so we intend to make investments for the long haul, and that's why there's this fairly protracted dialogue that occurs between ourselves and prospective communities to ensure that this is going to be a long-term fit for the community. Part of that analysis ensures that we're looking at the long-term viability of the water resources in that area. It does us no good to invest $135 million only to have to cease operations a few years later because there's inadequate utility capacity for us. So it's something we take to heart as part of our analysis. So we do use very efficient water processing technologies. According to our engineering team, the forecast for a dual-pass RO in this market would be 85 to 90% recovery, potentially higher subject to final engineering design and the proposals we receive from the third-party manufacturers. So that would mean that effectively, for every gallon of incoming water, nine tenths of that makes it into a finished bottle as outbound good. We do incorporate recycled PET into these bottles, and the proportion of recycled PET varies by customer demand, up to 50% PET that's been recycled, post-consumer product that's reincorporated into the bottles. Patrick talked about the true-zero-waste certification earlier and how that minimizes, you know, off-site disposal into a landfill. One thing that's not noted on here is the RO membranes. We actually send those to a third party who's able to reuse them for other less sensitive applications, and so those don't wind up in the landfills either once the spent cartridges have been used to their maximum lifespan in our plants. There's some talk during the Planning Commission hearing as well about, you know, basically forever chemicals or environmental contamination as a result of our operations. First and foremost, PET does not contain PFOS or BPA. It's free of both of those contaminants, so that is not something that's generated as a result of our operations, and therefore, we're not introducing PFOS into the environment. Similarly, there's a question about microplastics, spill containment, the environment. When resin is brought onto the site, it's in 6,200-gallon tankers, it is vacuum pumped into our silo, so it's under pressure, so much like if you were taking a hose around your house, it would suck up debris. The vacuum helps ensure that there are no errant pellets that spill out because it's under vacuum pressure. We also have spill mats under any of the junction points between the hoses and the silos, and so on the off chance that there was a missed connection or something fell out, it would be contained within those spill pans. Additionally, I won't go into the subsequent discussion on microplastics. We could be here for a long time, but there are a number of resources that I would encourage folks to read, third-party resources online about microplastics and PFOS and the true source of origin, which is not plastics manufacturing, but often textiles, fire retardant foams, and the like. So with that said, if there are any questions for council members or staff I can answer, I'd be happy to do so, otherwise I'll...
Go ahead, John.
So this was one of my original ones, and it works well with you up here, and I'm going to ask this in two different ways. You can choose whichever way makes more sense to answer it. Was there consideration given to locating the plant or the building on other lots? And maybe that's not your decision, maybe that's Ryan's decision, maybe that's your answer. I'm just curious, was there consideration or an option to build on one of the other outlots instead of where it's currently proposed? And/or why did Niagara and Ryan or one of you choose to go on that particular lot?
Sure, so it was a discussion. Brian, maybe I'll speak to it a little bit better about their intentions and desire for the park as a whole. One thing I will mention is that, looking at conceptual site plans, there are greater wetland impacts if we were to move closer to the, say, the freeway-adjacent parcel, for instance. And so by locating where we are, it maximizes the coverage ratio, so therefore, the efficient use of the site and also mitigates or minimizes impacts to any existing wetland areas. So there was an environmental motive behind that site design and selection. It was not just an arbitrary choice.
See, I asked questions I don't know the answer to, and, you know, it turns out okay. The other question I would have is, you mentioned, you know, doing your own due diligence on the communities before you move into them, and, you know, I heard a lot about that and felt that communication. I guess, did you, did you, Niagara, speak with and meet with other community leaders, community members, businesses in the community during that process? And what would their general feedback have been during those meetings?
Short answer is yes. I'll let Patrick answer that because he's the one who actually sat down with Chamber of Commerce and some local businesses.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for the question. I think the broad answer is, you know, we had multiple conversations with city officials, including staff, about our particular needs and project requirements. We did reach out to the Chamber of Commerce and met with some of their representatives in a focus group meeting, presented sort of the who we are, what we do, how, you know, do you think this would fit in the community, and we generally had very positive responses. I know there was a definite request for a grocery store, which we cannot deliver to the community, but, you know, in lieu of that, you know, we represent a stable employer who's going to be here long-term, who's going to give back to the community and be a great community partner. And I think that message and that conversation was very positive in many respects, so.
So generally positive, and I guess to double down or emphasize that it wasn't a decision, or it wasn't a process that solely involved city staff or city council members, if I heard that correctly. That's all I got for that.
Does anybody else have questions?
Mayor, that concludes item 8A on the agenda. Item 8B was the presentation regarding the Park I-35 preliminary plat and rezoning applications. And then 8C is the Niagara conditionally term application. So these are similar to the presentations provided at the Planning Commission meeting.
Sorry, I didn't hear you. What?
These are the presentations that were similar to the ones done at the Planning Commission meeting. I'd plan to do those next.
Okay.
So as, when the city receives land use applications such as a plat, there is a public hearing that is typically held before the city's planning commission, and then when the city council, the city council typically makes the final decision on the applications. These presentations are, again, given to the city council. So again, I'm re-present, re-presenting this information regarding the application for rezoning and preliminary plat approval, Park I-35 Industrial Park, proposed by Ryan Companies. Oops, not in presenter mode here.
Just curious, Renee, is this the last portion of the presentation?
Yeah.
No.
I mean, it took like an hour some last time.
Right. So...
Second to last.
It's the application, the presentation on the plat, the presentation on the conditional use permit, and then the presentations on the business subsidy were under eight, Agenda item eight, under public hearings. So if... Looking for your direction?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah.
I know this has been... This is kind of something that's already been presented, so I don't know if there's a condensed version.
I think I'll try to possibly, you know, I presented a lot of transportation information. I might just skip that entirely based on...
Yeah, unless there's someone that feels different. But it's been a long presentation, and staff has done a great job with it and that, but...
Right.
Condensed a little bit, that'd be great.
Sure. Okay, as we've all seen, Ryan Company has been working on this since 2012, 2013. The proposed plat is shown here, one lot. It's now been amended to three outlots, 119 acres. It's currently zoned urban reserve. Urban reserve is a zoning district typically reserved for properties that don't have urban services available to them. The request includes the request to rezone Lot 1 to Industrial. So this is the city's 2040 comprehensive land use plan map, which guides this area, the proposed plat area to industrial. Typical businesses you'd see here are office manufacturing, warehouse, assembly, outdoor sales. They're, these zoning districts are typically located near development, are near major transportation corridors, and zoning districts that would be allowed in this land use guidance are I-1 and I-2. All of the surrounding land is located in Newmarket Township. There are a variety of the existing land uses surrounding the site, or a combination of rural residential and light industrial, agricultural, wetlands, and interstate. Existing zoning surrounding the site is a combination of rural industrial. There are some rural businesses in, to the north of the site. Pretty much the remainder of the property around it is guided or zoned by Scott County as urban reserve, and the planned land use guidance for pretty much all of the properties surrounding the site is future industrial or commercial. This was just a slide that showed typical uses that are, uses that would be permitted within the I-1 zoning district, auto repair, breweries, contractor operations, lumberyards, manufacturing, research facilities, warehouse, distribution, showrooms, the like. The city code has standards related to lot and block arrangement, and the plat as proposed does meet the minimum requirements, with the exception of Outlet D and C were recommended to be combined by city staff and the planning commission so that they met minimum lot criteria. That was a condition of coming out of the planning commission meeting. Outlet B is a small outlot on the south... Outlet B is a small outlaw on the southern boundary of the plat that would be dedicated to the city for stormwater ponding. City code contains street standards related to street design. A single street meeting in the minimum design requirements is proposed to be constructed within the plat. The north-south portion of the road is proposed to be sixty, thirty-six feet in width within a seventy-foot right-of-way, except near its north where it's in a fifty-four-foot right-of-way or fifty-four feet within an eighty-foot right-of-way to allow for turn lanes. The east-west portion of the street is thirty-six feet in width and is in a road right-of-way that varies between eighty-five feet and 106 feet in width. The street will terminate in a temporary cul-de-sac at its southeast end. And that would be extended to Pillsbury Avenue when the adjacent properties develop. The street is temporarily exceeds the 500-foot cul-de-sac length, but is intended to be extended in the future. The street is considered to be a local road. Upon development of a property, a tree inventory is required to be completed. Under city code, forty percent of the significant trees must be retained and sixty percent can be removed. Significant trees are defined as hardwood trees, six inches in diameter or greater, or softwood trees, twelve inches or greater in diameter, or a coniferous tree, twelve feet in height or greater. There are plans to, there are 404 significant trees on the site, thirty-two point four-three of which are proposed to be removed. So they are meeting the tree preservation requirements. There are easements that are required during the plating of property. Typical standard easements regard, adjacent to road right-ways and on lot boundaries. In this particular case, we'll require additional easements to cover infrastructure that is in unusual locations. Sanitary sewer, force mains and water lines and gravity lines that are not adjacent to the road. Sanitary sewer became available to the property in 2021. The development area is served by a sanitary sewer lift station that is located at the corner of Dupont, at the roundabout, a southwest corner. The developer will be responsible for constructing sanitary sewers to and through the property. Utility plans propose, you can see on this particular drawing, gravity sewer is shown in blue and force mains are shown in red. So the developer will be constructing these lines as part of the development. The lines have been sized to accommodate a future development within Park I-35 and the surrounding area. Water also became available to the property in 2021 along the west side. It's was bore under I-35, but in the middle of the property. The developer will be responsible for constructing water to and through the property. Utility plans show proposed water lines as depicted here on this map. Also sized to accommodate future development within Park I-35 and the surrounding area. Additional easement area may be required on future Outlet A, depending on the final water line sizes within the development. That, those details are being worked out with the city engineer as part of his analysis. We're also ensuring that water easement or an easement is available so water can be provided to 11435 Deuce Road, which is this triangular shaped parcel that currently accesses off of Highway Two. Stormwater from the proposed development will perpetuate existing drainage patterns. Drainage for new impervious surfaces will be directed into stormwater ponds. There's a good portion of the site today that drains to the north under County Road Two. And then actually in a variety of other directions. Again, development will perpetuate existing drainage patterns. Wetland delineation was completed on, in 2021. Developer is proposing some minor wetland impacts for construction of the road into the development. And wetland replacement applicant, plan application has been submitted, is currently under review by a technical evaluation panel. And decisions on the wetland replacement application are forthcoming, but any preliminary plat approval must be conditioned on the approval of pending wetland applications. This map just shows the impacts that are proposed due to some, the road construction being proposed. There is a small area of DNR protected. Or there's no DNR protected waters on the site. There is a small floodplain area. It's a 500-year floodplain. There are no special requirements for 500-year floodplains other than the city can't allow critical facilities to be constructed in that, those areas such as hospitals or nursing homes. Access to the site, I'm going to kind of breeze over some of the transportation-related stuff because of the pre-presentation that Mike has already done. County Highway Two on the north, we're trying to remove all of the access points onto County Road Two with this plat. It's a minor arterial highway under the jurisdiction of Scott County. The existing two-lane bridge was, on I-35 was constructed in 1963 and is not considered to be structurally deficient. We do know that there are a lot of people that use this bridge to go get to the north because the traffic counts on I-35, north of the bridge jump by approximately 20,000 vehicles per day. This is just a quick view of the two-lane bridge, very little shoulder. These are some photographs of County Road Two as you're moving to the east. So the one on the top is, you can see the commercial business where Park Auto is located. Very large access points into that property. The next picture in the middle is where Dupont Avenue comes across. And then the bottom one is at the very far easterly side. There's a residential driveway here that will be removed, actually in both of the, the middle and the bottom picture. A residential driveway will be removed as a condition of the plat approval. Mike didn't talk a ton about this, but I'm just going to touch on this really quick. With increasing development interests surrounding the interchange area, the city, county and township and MINDAT have been working together on a solution. And in 2010 and again in 2015, 16, we evaluated design alternatives for a new interchange. The primary purpose of these efforts was to identify a preferred design, including right-of-way limits, so the city could guide future development around the interchange appropriately, particularly in terms of right-of-way preservation. The most recent efforts, planning efforts resulted in the selection of this diverging diamond interchange as the preferred interchange design. There is no project currently programmed by MINDAT or Scott County to reconstruct I-35 Casatu interchange. The proposed Park I-35 plat is consistent with the diverging diamond layout in terms of proposed right-of-way preservation and the location of the access into the development off Highway Two. The accesses into the Parks Auto property will also be removed as a condition of the plat. This was a condition of the original annexation agreement between, on the property. And the preliminary plat drawings that have been submitted accurately depict the removal of these two accesses and alternative access provided on the backside of the property as shown here. I'm going to skip through the traffic analysis stuff. The subdivision ordinance does require that sidewalk be installed on one side of all local streets, including industrial streets. They are not currently shown on the plan, but the, that is a condition that at least they have to be provided adjacent to the lot that's being developed and that we would allow a deferral of that construction adjacent to the outlots. Regarding parks, the subdivision ordinance requires that eight percent of the land be dedicated for park recreational or public open space purposes, or a cash contribution equal to eight percent of the market value of the land is dedicated to the city. The Parks Commission has reviewed the proposed plat and recommended cash in lieu of land dedication in this particular area. Environmental study requirements I've touched on in previous presentation. The city engineer reviewed the submittal and he's provided comments in a redlined plan set. Scott County Highway Department also reviewed the proposed plat and have made some recommendations, some regarding right-of-way, requiring a right-turn lane into the development off of Highway Two, streetlight installation. So their comments will be incorporated into the final plat. MINDAT has also provided comment of, they have received all of the traffic volume information, traffic study information provided by Bolton and Mink. And basically haven't provided a lot of comment. I mean, they acknowledged the plat. Instead of that, any work within their right-ways require a permit. A new, any work on the level-one layout and EAW for interchange will need to be updated when the interchange project moves forward. And that we should incorporate pedestrian facilities which could tie in, from the development that would tie into future pedestrian facilities on the interchange. This plat has been reviewed by the Public Works Director, the Police Chief, the Fire Department, the Building Official and the City Attorney. The Planning Commission provided recommendation of approval unanimously on November 29th. The recommendations for rezoning and preliminary plat are contained in the draft resolutions, which were contained in your packet. There was one additional condition added by staff in addition to the conditions of the Planning Commission. And that related to that the final plat approval could not occur with, unless the DNR water appropriations permit increase was approved and granted. So there is no action being requested by the city council based on the petition for EAW. That is currently under review. This is just so you have all the information and are ready to make decisions.
The council will be asked to table this item and direct staff to schedule it for a future council meeting once the environmental study question has been resolved.
Has the DNR acknowledged the application? And have they given a timeframe of when we would expect to hear?
Yes and no. They simply acknowledge what the timeframes are that are defined under state rules that they need to respond to them and indicated that they do so, but.
And what's that timeframe?
They have fifteen business days. From the area of time that they received, they have fifteen business days from the time that they received the application to review it, business days does not include weekends or legal holidays. And they have the option to extend it up to an additional fifteen days if they deem it necessary.
And when was it submitted?
The DNR received the petition on December 12th. Yeah, Monday, Monday.
Can't hear us in the other room?
That whole last part there, we couldn't hear what was going on, couldn't hear who was speaking, so we missed it on the other room.
Yeah, my, my mic was.
Oh, there you go.
Yep. So long and short, the DNR has fifteen business days from the receipt, which was on Monday. Business days do not include weekends or holidays to make a determination whether or not an additional environmental study work is necessary in response to the application. They also have the ability to extend it for another fifteen business days if they feel it's necessary. What they, we've communicated with them, they've indicated that they have received it and that they will do their due diligence within the timeframes that are identified under state rules.
So it's fair to say that a vote on this would not occur until mid, at the earliest?
The earliest that this item would likely come before the council for any sort of, for the council to take it off the table would be the first meeting in January, which would be January 12th.
Okay, thank you. So is the recommendation then not to have discussion, ask our questions related to this now? And wait until that future meeting? No, no, no.
Not you guys.
I'm still going to ask the questions, just whether it's now or later. And that's what I'm trying to clarify, what is recommended?
Let's have council discussion when it's in front of us for action.
Okay.
Okay.
Need a motion for anything?
So we would be looking for a motion to table this item and then direct staff to reschedule it for a future council meeting once the environmental petition issue has been resolved.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Bryce, motion by Bryce, second by Amanda in favor.
Aye.
Let's table.
Okay, I think agenda item 7C, Mayor, is the application for conditional use permit to allow increased building height. It's proposed by Purple Rain Properties. Purple Rain, an affiliate of Niagara Bottling. I guess this is background that you already have. Has a purchase agreement to develop the property. They're proposing to construct the.
Renee, since we're having to table the item, do you mind if we just move to the action?
Sure.
Is that okay?
Yep. Absolutely. I'm just going to really quickly show on the map where the location of the silos. There's three silos proposed at sixty feet in height and three at sixty feet, sixty-five feet nine inches on the south edge of the building, as shown on these drawings. And then we will jump to. The Planning Commission recommended approval on a four-to-one vote of the conditional use permit on November 29th, outlined in the findings of fact and Resolution 2284 that was included in your packet. So there's, again, the action being requested is to table the item.
So I'll make a motion to table the item.
Second.
It's a motion by myself, second by Amanda in favor.
Aye.
All right. So, thank you, Renee. That was the last part of the presentation, so.
For the business subsidy applications.
Go ahead.
Let's shake.
Excuse me, may I do a point of information, Mayor?
Please.
May I ask, you have about 70 people here that have been here for a good two and a half hours. Some of us another hour before that out rallying. And we would really like to have a chance to ask some questions and speak to you. And we know that this meeting is going to extend to Tuesday. That seems obvious. So could we perhaps get you all to vote to say that you would agree to switch the order of things up on the meetings, on the agenda? My understanding is that if you get two-thirds approval or something, you should be able to make some changes, yes?
We have one last thing on the presentation.
From what I've seen, those could take an hour.
Jake, how long is it going to take? Less than 20 minutes?
I have a question about the items that you tabled. Is that going to, is there going to be another public hearing about that? So there's going to be no?
We'll more than likely be continuing this public hearing to Tuesday.
But you tabled the general business, so there's no public comment about, because when we do public commenting, right? We're just going to be commenting about the subsidy application, is that right?
There won't be another public hearing for what we just tabled, but.
So that's it? Like this is it?
This and then we'll likely be continuing this, because I'm assuming this is going to go late. So we'll likely be continuing this till Tuesday.
Okay, so even though it's tabled, this will be our only opportunity to speak.
This is Tuesday.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
And can I clarify too, maybe? So there was never going to be another public hearing on those two items. We can, we, Mayor, can decide if public comment would be accepted beyond what has already been taken. But another formal public hearing is not required nor was planned, but public comment could be taken if decided.
That's correct.
Okay.
I know it's a long night and we.
We ask that if this is going to be, if we're going to move this forward, can you not vote so that you can reopen the public hearing for those two items?
We will, we will be reopening the public hearing for these.
For the conditional plat, for the conditional use and the preliminary plat?
For the conditional plat, for the conditional use and the preliminary plat?
That was a, that was a pub...
As the legislature said, he's not, you're not...
Yeah, there's some confusion. So that, the public hearings on the conditional use permit and the plat, those were done by the Planning Commission. So that's their realm. We're not, we wouldn't be reopening that. However, with the public hearing on the subsidies, I think it's fair game if you have questions or comments on that, as long as it's kept within a general scope.
For tonight, Mayor?
For tonight, and then if we, assuming we do continue this into Tuesday.
Okay.
Yep. I know it's been a long evening. I appreciate everyone's patience.
Take the talk desk. Yeah, that's tired. I am forty-one, I am tired.
Good evening.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, we're gonna jump into the business subsidy application presentation. So little background, we've went over a lot of this. Park I-35 Industrial Park was annexed in two parts, first part in 2021, the second part in 2022. Municipal utilities were extended to the site in 2021. The proposed Niagara Bottling facility is at four-hundred-twenty-five thousand square feet for one lot within the Park I-35 Industrial Park. And as part of the project, Niagara submitted several business subsidy applications in association with this project. The first one we'll discuss is the Minnesota Investment Fund. So we did discuss these programs early 2022 when discussing potential business assistance offered by the state, county, and city. This is a state program through the Minnesota Investment, or the Minnesota Department of Employment and Economic Development, or DED, and it's designed to help add new workers and retain high-quality jobs on a statewide basis. If a business applicant is approved by DED, funds will be awarded to the local government, who will then provide those funds to assist the new or expanding business. On October 18th, 2022, the city received the application for MYF submitted by Niagara Bottling. If a business is potentially eligible for MYF, the following steps must be completed. The business and the city must work together to complete the MYF application. The city will then submit the completed application to the designated DED loan officer. DED evaluates the application and notifies the city and the business of approval or denial for the program. If approved, DED will determine a maximum funding amount and job creation requirements. If a business is approved by DED, DED and the city will enter into a grant contract specifying the details of the award and job creation requirements. After the grant contract is fully executed, the city will enter into a loan agreement with the business. At that point, the city will submit the required executed agreements, payment request documentation, annual progress reports, and other information as requested by DED. MYF funds will be paid only on a reimbursement basis after the required documentation verifying expenditures is submitted and approved. And jobs created and capital investment expenditures may only be counted after the grant contract has been fully executed. Any purchases before that will not count towards the program. As part of the MYF application, the city had to complete a financial analysis. We enlisted Ellers to complete this financial analysis, which is required. The findings are there below. After review of the information provided by Wells Fargo and discussions with representatives from the company, Ellers believes that the company is in good financial condition and it has seen continued growth, and all indications are this will continue with the demand in the market.
Jake, I'm just gonna interrupt for a second. Tom just told me that some of the folks in the other room are feeling that there's not gonna be an opportunity for public comment tonight. There absolutely is. This is the last part of the presentation, and then we will be opening the public hearing. So if you came here for the public hearing and were considering leaving, you've just spent three hours infesting in it, so please consider sticking around. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'll note, we're a third of the way through this already, so it won't take much longer. The Minnesota Investment Fund continued. Niagara's application requests $405,000 through MYF, provided as a forgivable loan. The term of the loan would be for ten years, which is the maximum for machinery and equipment, and that is at a zero percent interest rate. These purchases would then be held as collateral. If Niagara were to fail to meet any job creation requirements as listed in the grant contract, they would be subject to a proportional decrease in assistance. There's an example there I'm not gonna go through. Basically, it says, you know, if they only create half the jobs, they only get fifty percent of the assistance. Here's a map of all the current Minnesota Investment Fund businesses within the state, the states from January 2014 to current December 2022. It's a total of seventy-seven projects with a total impact to jobs of 4,443. Total MYF awards over $35 million, and total leverage as a result of MYF projects to the state to date equals over a million dollars, almost a million and a half dollars. The next application we'll talk about was for Job Creation Fund, which is, again, offered through the Minnesota Department of Employment and Economic Development, or DED. JCF, or Job Creation Fund, awards companies with job creation awards and capital investment rebates. The companies must work with the local government where a project is located in order to apply to DED. In October 2022 as well, staff received the application from Niagara Bottling for Job Creation Fund. If a business is potentially eligible for JCF, the following steps must be completed. Similar to the MYF program, the business must work with the local government to complete the application. DED evaluates the application and notifies the business and the city of approval or denial. And if approved, DED will formally designate the business as a JCF business via an award letter to determine a final number of job creation or capital investment rebate amounts. Awards and rebates over $500,000 are required to hold a public hearing to formally designate the business. The project may begin once an award letter has been signed. However, no jobs created or capital investment expenditures will be eligible until that business subsidy agreement has been fully executed. If a business has been designated as a JCF business, they will have to enter into that BSA, which details the award and the rebate to be provided after job creation and capital investment goals are met. The JCF business and the DED Commissioner sign the BSA, and the date of final signature is considered the project designation date. Similar to MYF, it's only counted after the contracts are signed, and the local government will then assist the JCF business as needed with submitting the required annual progress reports and documentation to DED. Niagara has requested 800,000 in job creation fund funding. The funds would be used for job creation awards and capital investment rebates. Similar to MYF, if Niagara were to fail to meet that job creation requirement as listed in the BSA, they'd be subject to proportional decreases in assistance offered. Preliminary application materials received from Niagara indicate that they're planning a fifty new total, new positions, hourly rates ranging between twenty dollars and twenty-six hour, or twenty-twenty-six an hour to fifty-thirty-seven an hour. For exempt roles, the salary will be 70,500 to 208,900. Following slide has a map of all the current job creation fund businesses in Minnesota. Again, seventy-seven projects. This has related to 4,786 new jobs. Total JCF awards are over 28 million, and the total projected eligible capital investment is equal to over $500 million. Another, it's similar to the JCF. It's a separate program offered through DED. It's called the Partnership Program. It's their main training grant option. Participating businesses must partner with an accredited Minnesota educational institution. If they're approved, the funds would be awarded to that educational institution to come up with specific training related to that business. A cash or in-kind contribution from the business must match grant funds on at least a one-to-one basis. Niagara has applied for $400,000 through the DED Partnership Program. The final application here is the city subsidy for sewer and water availability charge connection fee reductions. Niagara Bottling has submitted their application. The assistance is proposed to take the form in a reduction of SAC and WAC, is the shorter way to say those. Niagara has requested a total reduction in their sewer access or SAC in the amount of 139,582. Niagara has also requested a total reduction in their water access or WAC in the amount of 2,945,163. Together, these two figures combined to equal the total not-to-exceed amount of 3,845,745. The city, as Tom mentioned in his financial presentation, will still collect SAC and WAC connection fees for what would typically be collected for this acreage, which equals 108 SAC units. Therefore, the city will still collect fees of 74,628 for SAC and 220,429 for WAC. I'll just briefly go over this, because Tom had a much more detailed analysis, but this shows the rate of return on those uncollected SAC and WAC fees. At proposed annual Niagara sewer and water use, the uncollected SAC fees would only take point-six years for the city to exceed or equal. And for the WAC fees, that would take a little longer, three-point-four years, the city would equal or exceed those uncollected fees. And these numbers take only into consideration the Phase One water and sewer use. Property tax and other revenues were not considered in this analysis, as it only relates to the budget impact of the sewer and water utility funds. Requested action is none. This is all informational. We're gonna hold off on voting on these. It's kind of putting the cart before the horse, as you say. So no action will be taken on this until the land use stuff is approved. Any questions?
Josh.
We're gonna hold off on questions, right?
Yeah, let's hold off on questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, staff, for the presentations. Is there anything further that needs to be presented before we open the public hearing? Okay. In that case, I'm gonna open the public, well, before I open the public hearing, just some quick ground rules. Please try and keep your time to two minutes. Please do not repeat points that have already been made. It's a late night. We're already, I'm sure all of us are already kind of fried. Let's just, let's try and keep this moving along. We want to hear from everybody. So if you can just keep your comments respectful, try and keep them within two minutes if possible, and don't repeat points. So with that...
Mr. Mayor, if I could, just so we can set appropriate expectations for how this process will work, within the council chambers itself, you simply need to raise your hand, ask to be recognized if you wish to speak. However, if you are in the hallway or you are in the back room, you have already been given an opportunity to fill out a request to speak form, basically a list. Those have been forwarded or will be forwarded to the mayor. If you have decided in the meantime, before you decided not but want to, you simply need to find the staff person in your space. If the staff people in those spaces could raise their hand, and then they can add you to a list, and that will also be forwarded to the mayor. So we will do the chamber first, the hallway second, and then the back room third. And then we will take public comment from individuals that are participating virtually.
All right, so with that, we'll open the public hearing at 10:02. You raise your hand, please. State your name and address.
Susan McPhee, New Market. Wow, that was painful, especially for those of us that were here November 29th. So my eyes are beginning to blur. I hope I can read what I wrote. Family, it has such a nice ring to it this time of year. It didn't go unnoticed by myself that both Ryan Companies and Niagara both went out of their way to make it known that they were a family-owned business, as if that would somehow make the blow of not only the approved rezoning of the area currently in question into an industrial park, but the intent to take up to 310 million gallons of Minnesota's water annually, then turn around and sell it. Tom Terry, you stated in the news interview, if the city felt that there was going to be a negative impact to the community, we would not be pursuing this particular business. First off, I would say that this is much bigger than this particular business. I would also ask you to define negative impacts and for whom, not only as it relates to Niagara, but the rezoning of this area overall. There have already been negative impacts. It's called stress. There will be negative impacts and unintentional consequences, as well as home values, home values to owners across from the proposed site. Impacts can be such as seriously affecting the lifestyle of nearby residents to include noise, view, and traffic. Significant traffic increase. I realize you said a study was already performed regarding the flow of traffic, and it was felt that there would be no real foreseeable problems. Regardless, your outcome makes no sense to anyone with common sense. Of course, traffic is going to increase, especially since Niagara is a 24/7 operation. The complete transformation of this community into something unrecognizable and contrary to why people live out here to begin with, from rural country into industrial ugly. In October 27th staff memorandum, the following was specifically checked off as a council goal for Elko New Market. The community will preserve its historic landmarks and small-town character while providing suburban amenities and services. With all the things you listed, I fail to see how you can maintain small-town character. I also find it insulting that you find it important to preserve the historic landmarks and yet seem oblivious to preserving lifestyle homes and property of the community, some of whom have been here for generations. The South is growing and transforming to include an emerging pattern of panhandlers at local businesses, street corners in Lakeville, Burnsville, and Apple Valley. People have also begun to take up residence and vehicles and motor homes in a nearby park and ride. Industrial park. I don't know if they add that word "park" to make it more appealing. However, my idea of a park involves expansive green spaces, not concrete buildings and asphalt. They're places people go to, to be with family or to enjoy outdoor activities, and the peace away from the hustle and bustle, not the noise of industry and semi-traffic. It's where wildlife can thrive, not become a roadkill statistic because of the increased traffic on our roads. I can't believe that the city of Niag, the city went out of their way to lure Niagara here, especially after they were presented or protested out of Eau Claire. If the city had done their due diligence, then they would have known that Niagara has asked communities to take more water than originally agreed upon, once they get a foothold somewhere, such as the Los Lunos, New Mexico plant. Minnesota's license plates read "land of 10,000 lakes" for a reason. Water is a part of our identity as a state. It's why people move here, for the lakes, to fish, swim, boat, or the tranquility of being by the water. I know some people believe that the aquifer can handle the taking of 310 million gallons of water a year from just one business, but as one Eau Claire protester stated, just because we currently have an abundant amount of water doesn't mean we should try to use it all. And let's be clear, this aquifer system is not just Elko New Markets. We have a responsibility to all communities who utilize it.
Thank you, thank you for your comments. I appreciate it. We're, we're over four minutes now, so...
Okay. Okay. It appears that this goes deeper than the southeast corner of Deuce Road and I-35 Elko New Market has been signed on to what is called the I-35 Solutions Alliance. The alliance supports funding, building, and maintaining a multimodal transportation system along the I-35 corridor between Elko New Market and downtown Minneapolis that will, one, reduce congestion, improve safety, enable the metropolitan area in Minnesota to compete economically in the U.S. and the world. I would ask, reduce congestion for whom? Not this area. In fact, it will draw more traffic farther south. Have you seen the clutter of traffic along County Road 70 between I-35 and Cedar, now that big companies like FedEx and Amazon and more have moved in?
Is anybody else wanting to yield their time?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Okay. I would say, when is enough enough? Where does this expansion on I-35 stop, or are the plans to build all the way to the Iowa border? That's attractive. Perhaps we should consider changing our license plate from the land of 10,000 lakes to the land of 10,000 warehouses or industrial parks. I was told over the phone that the job of the city council is to do the bidding of the people. I don't know who you define as the people, but we are right here in front of you. We are everyday citizens who are not only the backbone of this community, but of this country. We outnumber you, and we told you no with regards to the rezoning and Niagara's 65-foot-high silo request. It is highly disturbing when a few people who say they work for the people turn around and do what they want despite the people. Just because you can doesn't mean you should. As I said, on November 29th, search and you will see multiple headlines involving major water sources at record-low levels. In the West, this includes Lake Mead's Reservoir, which supplies water and power to 25 million people. Also, due to low levels of water on the Colorado River, the federal government has declared what they refer to as a Tier One water shortage for the first time ever. Per the DNR, September 22nd was the driest on record in... Per the DNR, September 22nd was the driest on record in the Twin Cities. There is a saying, actually, also, the DNR's drought map shows Scott County is still under extreme drought conditions near the Minnesota River and severe drought conditions in the rest of the county.
Anybody else want to yield their time?
I've got one more sentence.
Go ahead.
Thank you. There is a saying, "Save it for a rainy day." May I suggest you vote to be water-wise and preserve it in case a shortfall of literally rainy days continues. You don't have the right to gamble with our water. Thank you.
Thank you.
Come on up.
Hi. I'll try to be quick.
Please state your name and address.
There's a ton of information out there. I guess I just want to say thank you. I know that, you know, you've seen in the papers, a lot of people are commenting, you know, the city's really done its due diligence. And I agree that there's a ton of information. What's up?
Could I please ask you to state your name and address for the record?
Oh, sorry. Ally Clement, 2651 Zerxes Trail, Elko. There's a ton of information and work that has been done. A lot of that information points to the 2040 Comprehensive Plan and supports that. And I just want to read some information that actually is inconsistent with the 2040 Plan. Development of the AUAR site is currently proposed is inconsistent with council's Thrive MSP 2040 policies that call for conservation, restoration, and protection of the region's national resources. It is also inconsistent with Scott County's 2040 Comprehensive Plan, which is included defined natural area corridor development guidance. I had these all spelled out, but I'm just going to kind of give you the gist of it. The proposed AUAR development is also inconsistent with the city's planned natural resources and environmental confirmation -- conservation goals. I also wanted to tell you a little bit about the traffic studies. They had a lot of information that they shared with us about the traffic studies, and I just want people to be aware that there's a lot of information that they have not shared with us about the traffic studies, such as on page 151 of the final AUAR. Section 9 of the Traffic Impact Study concludes that, upon reaching five-year traffic volumes, the need for improvement is apparent at both ramp intersections and at the main site access to 2. Both ramps are predicted to operate with unacceptable and unsafe levels. Traffic may struggle to safely access County Road 2. Both the existing network and the migrated improvements are shown to overcapacity during the peak hours with severe delays throughout the area. The existing two-lane section of County Road 2 must be expanded to at least four lanes in order to provide acceptable operations. A few more here, I'm just going to skip over in the matter of time. High County Road 2-through volumes will prevent efficient operations if expansion of the road raid does occur. Additionally, County Road 2 and 46 roundabout operations may degrade to unacceptable levels upon reaching full build-out of the site. In fact, in a letter of response to the draft AUAR, the county pointed out that in a letter, this improvement is not currently funded in the city -- any of the improvements that you have been mentioning. The city has shown you drawings about what they're going to do, a diamond interchange, you know, a lot of dreams that they like to see realized. But in meetings with Scott County Transportation Services staff, they've indicated their position is to not support short-term mitigation, temporary improvements, but to concentrate future efforts with financial investments on the ultimate reconsideration of reconstruction of the entire interchange, which is not planned, funded, or even included in the state's 10-year plan. In the letter, the county pointed out that this improvement is not currently funded, and the city should not make the assumption that this improvement will be funded or programmed. Also, by forcing this development through in violation of -- you are in violation of your own city's zoning criteria. Number 5, that states that traffic generation by the proposed use is within capabilities of the streets serving the property. I did point that out a couple times in the planning commission. Unfortunately, they just went ahead and suggested that you go ahead, even though that they -- that did not meet the criteria. So I would just like to say that in 2020, Washington State Senate passed a bill that would ban new permits for watering bodily -- bottling operations. SB 6278 states, "Any use of water for the commercial production of bottled water is deemed to be detrimental to the public welfare and of public interest." I'm just going to skip that part. The legislation would ban one of the worst corporate water abuses, the extraction of local water supplies in plastic bottles. Other states and communities are also looking to limit or tax commercial water bottling operations, with state bills introduced in Maine and Michigan, and the local ballot measures passed in Oregon and Montana. As other cities and states pass regulations against water bottling -- against water bottling operations, siphoning off municipal water, Elko New Market City Council fell for every one of Niagara's promises, hook, line, and sinker. I hope you don't prove to be the chumps that Niagara has pegged you as, desperate enough to sell their soul to the devil. I mean, I'm sorry, sell their water to Niagara bottling.
Thank you. So who wants to go next? I saw you had the first hand up, so come on up, man. And I'm going to ask again, I'm trying not to be heavy-handed with the time piece, but there are a lot of people to talk, so please try and keep your comments to two minutes. At some point, I might have to jump in, so... Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Julius, for giving me the opportunity to talk today. My name is Vida Conitz. I live at 983247 Street East. That is New Market Township.
Thank you.
And I believe Renee is going to put some slides up for me. I'm a science teacher and have done a little studying of groundwater in my time, and so I had some questions about why maybe this was skipped. It seems important to me. It shows that our county has a recharge rate, the time it takes for rainwater to actually filter down and get to our water table to replenish it, of over a century. So we're basically mining ancient water, and I think we all need to think about that, okay? The reason that that graph didn't fluctuate a whole lot is because it takes a long time for that water to get there, and, you know, that wasn't 100 years worth of data, is what I'm wondering about. Next slide, please. This just shows what someone already stated, so I won't stress it for too long, but we are definitely in a drought period right now that is affecting many things. Farmers are noticing their ponds are drained up, the rivers are low, the lakes are low. This affects water quality. So we're concerned -- we're concerned about quantity and quality of our water. So this is a study that I haven't heard from you all that I'm wondering if you've seen. You, I understand you have looked at some Met Council things, but this is a Met Council study that was released in 2016 that basically shows the South Metro area where we're at is going to be in trouble by 2040 when it comes to this aquifer, that we're going to need to find another source. The water table is going to drop. There will not be adequate water. And if you read, this is page 89, if you flip forward in the study to page 91, the study suggests that many of these communities are going to need to look like to the Minnesota River, okay? Additional cost and cleanup required. So I just would really like to bring this to your attention again, so that you will please take a look to see if it is relevant to what we're looking at. It seems to me like it is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
From our hydrology team, did you have any immediate thoughts or any immediate comments? I know I'm putting you on the spot, and I'm doing that intentionally. Sorry.
But I can buy time while you're getting your microphone set up.
You're good.
No, yeah, the second map she showed, yeah, I'm aware of that. That's a predictive model that was done by Met Council to look ahead based on future predictive pumping. You know, I looked at that relative to where the city is, and if you look at that map, the city is located off of that map to the south and to the west. And if you kind of look at the contour intervals on there, you know, there's that two-foot drop, basically, is what that model predicts if you look at that map.
Okay.
So that's related to that. Regarding the recharge question, it's a great question. Yeah, that water is very old, right? It was recharged by the glaciers, but it continues to be recharged. It takes a long time for it to get there, okay? But as we continue to get precipitation, that water is continuing to recharge. Now, you get periods of drought. There may be fluctuations, which we saw in that data over the last 40 years, and you see a response relative to periods of drought and recharge.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Josh. Really? All right. Whoever wants to go next, come on up.
Tim Zieber, 25420 Natchez Avenue. Thank you, council, mayor, and staff for allowing everybody to speak again tonight after we spoke at the planning meeting. Just a couple things. I'll try to keep this under the three and a half minutes I clocked myself at, at home.
Thank you.
First point that builds off of the previous presentation about potential aquifer, at least having to limit pumping. We may not be running out of water, but we may have to limit pumping in the future. Like, I believe Burnsville is already at that level of having to limit some pumping and pull from surface waters. And we need to look to the future in how much we are maybe allowed to pump by the DNR. And my biggest point I want to leave you with as an ask is just consider the opportunity cost that we are taking on in taking on Niagara as a business here and allowing them a full build-out, in that they will be using a considerable amount of water that we could potentially have a lot of businesses that would be paying property taxes and providing jobs and paying into the schools and things, that that single business would be taking up that much infrastructure and water from us. And then another thing, that's just my personal thing, is pricing on water. I don't feel that our city does very much water conservation pricing, and in the Met Council's assumptions about how much water pumping and such is allowed, they're going -- they're planning for a 20% reduction through conservation measures into the future, and I kind of, I feel like we need to, the best way to conserve things is to price them accordingly, that people do not feel that it is cheaper to just toss it down the sewer than it is to put in place recycling and reuse measures. That maybe does not apply to Niagara, but to our potential future industrial users and even commercial users. Having tiers that go above and beyond just for houses and maybe applying to restaurants and things of that size, we need to consider a pricing model that uses our capitalist system in this country to price things that people value them enough to save them. And the last question, just, what rate will you charge well owners if they're forced to join city water because of the expansion of pumping? I mean, it's not necessarily a given, but if it did happen and somebody located right on the edge of town had to join city water, what rates are they getting charged? Thank you.
Thank you. I know that I have a direct answer for that question, but I think it's worth consideration. Thank you. Who wants to, yeah, come on up. Please state your name and address.
Jason Sherman, 1314 Overlook Street, New Market. Thank you to the council, mayor, staff, and all the consultants for staying another late night. We really appreciate it. I want to kind of lead off with some questions that I've kind of thought about through all the presentations, that I'm sure some of the council and other people have considered, but I kind of want to challenge you all to make sure that we do our due diligence in this process. The first of all is the improvements to the water system. As an 18-year resident, I was here during the early years of the growth of the town when we went through a lot of the water issues that we had with drying up wells, contaminated wells, the new water plant and all that. And I prefer not to go down that road again. And now, if we don't have, if Niagara is brought up to speed and our infrastructure isn't up to snuff at that time, what does that mean for the capacity of the system and the future growth? Aren't we putting the cart before the horse a little bit? And I understand that, you know, we're going to be paying for it over time, but these are just challenges I want to bring forward to make sure that our residents are accounted for, because, you know, it is a city overall. My next point is, I tried to break these out into sections for everyone. On the traffic side of things, we, very good presentation on that, but I kind of wonder if axleway was considered with a lot of those, because we're looking at 110 large-tonnage vehicles per day, which is going to increase delays, because your cumin delays are shown on your chart, but it's also going to accelerate the road and bridge deterioration. Am I correct on that? And we're already looking at a 60-year-old bridge. Now, that's my concern. At some point, that's going to start to deteriorate more rapidly in the next few years than it would have had we not continued to see that extra traffic across that interchange. Aquifer recharge. The word "sustainable situation" was used. Under this, if I was following your phrasing correctly, you said that's when the water would return to normal levels. I guess I'm kind of wondering what you mean by "sustainable," if you could maybe elaborate on that at some point. The schools. So what I'm seeing in this is 721 doesn't get any direct benefit from this, and I understand a lot of that has to do with the location of the business park. So, you know, 721 is not in that district or in that zone, excuse me, but what kind of benefit can we see, you know, in some sort of advantage to the ISD 721? Because Lakeville's going to be getting a substantial amount of tax revenue from this, if I follow the charts correctly. Zoning ordinances. One thing I noticed in the ordinances for the I-1, I-1 industrial, was I did not see any light or noise ordinances or abatement procedure process. Now, is that on the table to discuss in the future? Because I think that that should be something that's going to be discussed. This is actually going to be for the city attorney. Does the city have a backstop, which protects the city council residents from the sudden departure of Niagara? Who pays for the remainder of the infrastructure once it's been built and there's an outstanding balance on the debt? Is the city going to take that responsibility on? And that's kind of going to be a concern of a lot of residents, I think. Local employment. What feasibility do we have that the employment's going to impact locally? Are we going to see a lot of local residents working there? Because one of the things I've heard from a lot of the planning meetings is daytime labor is one of the big things that we need to bring to the area. Is this going to be the jumpstart we need to get those other businesses in the, into the area, like the grocery stores, the hardware stores, that kind of stuff that the residents desperately want? And then on the finance side of things, do we know a number on how much it costs in 2021 to run the water connections out to the industrial park? And then on the connection fee reduction, I guess I'm a little concerned as to why we're providing a subsidy for a, I'm guessing they're a multi-billion-dollar company, when $3 million could do a fair amount of help to residents paying off and reducing their load on the infrastructure? Because, you know, everyone knows that we pay a massive amount of water to the city, you know, to help pay off the plant and things like that. So I think in that regards, you know, that should be something that's seriously considered. And then I want to second what Mr. Zieber said about considering the amount of usage and stress we put on the system, because at some point, we have to consider that amount of load that we're putting on for what they return. And I just want to thank you for your time tonight and considering my questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So there were, there were a lot of questions there, and I wanted to make sure we were answering every question as they came up. I don't know that that's going to be doable necessarily with all those, but, and I appreciate that, but they're all valid points, and I, if we can connect at some point after the meeting, I'd be happy to follow up and make sure you have those answers. Yep. I think that's some, is that something we can address now? Do you have?
Yes.
Please, go ahead.
So, anytime the city's making an investment in the system, as the city engineer has indicated, we are replacing, we're building capacity for future uses. Anytime we do that, there is a risk to the city that you may not have the development that you are expecting or building for within the timeframe that you are expecting. There's an inherent risk. You recall during my presentation, I talked about some of those inherent risks. When you're dealing with something like Niagara, we are making investments that we would have made anyways, but they're being accelerated. So, part of the research we did is, has Niagara moved? How long are they, are where they're at? And what we found in our research is, other than maybe one instance, which had unique circumstances with the leased facility, they have not discontinued operations in other locations that we've been able to identify. They are a long-term hold, actually for the reasons that they've indicated. It's a specialized facility, it's a significant investment, et cetera. So, whether it's a residential developer who says, "I'm going to come in and put in three thousand homes" and the market tanks for an extended period of time, and you built capacity for that, whether it's a large commercial development for the same reason, there is some inherent risk at any time that the city makes any sort of an investment. So, the, there is some risk. I, to say that would be, would be false. But the reality is that having a business like this helps mitigate that risk in other areas because of the volume of water that they buy on a regular basis. That cash flow and volume that they buy helps build the reserves and helps buffer you against it. But there is some risk there. But again, looking at the nature of the use and their history in other communities, that risk is relatively low in our assessment, but that is one of the things that the city council does have to consider.
Who wants to speak next? Come on up. Visual aids, I love it. Great.
There's a lot of maps here tonight, but none of them showed the family-owned and operated residence that are going to live directly adjacent to the proposed facility. So, there I have mapped it. I guess I've called your attention the lack of residents anywhere else adjacent to the industrial park and all the residents adjacent to where the proposed Niagara facility is. All right. So, these, these concerns are going to really be focused on those local residents. At two six one two six, my wife and I aren't one of the ones in the inner perimeter there. We're the resident just to the north. So, my concerns are about light and noise pollution. So, first on noise. The MPCA or the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency has empowered and enforced state rules around noise. Rule seventy thirty sets statutory limits for noise. These limits are, yeah, from, from the perspective of the hearer. Of most interest is nighttime noise. On a residential property, it must not exceed fifty-five decibels for more than six minutes in an hour. There are different standards for public road noise, so only sound coming from the proposed Niagara property can be considered, but that does include truck noise on that property. And you can see that their truck plan is the red line circling the plant there. So, we can't measure sound output from a plant and a source that doesn't exist yet, but we do know four things. Per Planning Commission documents, Niagara truck traffic at full capacity will be a hundred and ten trucks in and a hundred and ten trucks out in a twenty-four-hour period. So, on average, that's six and a half, or that's a truck coming in or out every six and a half minutes.
I, can, can I just get you to speak closer to the microphone?
That's the first time I've ever been asked to talk louder. I love it. All right. So, we can't measure sound out from a plant that doesn't exist, but we do know a couple of things. One, per Planning Commission documents, we know the volume of truck traffic, which is a, I think, I don't know how to count truck trips, but that's either a twenty percent increase of the truck traffic that's on Deuce Road or a forty percent increase. But again, we're not talking about noise on Deuce Road, we're talking about it around the facility. So, we do know that the sound output of a semi-truck traveling less than thirty-five miles an hour, according to the Federal Highway Administration, is between eighty-two and eighty-eight decibels at fifty feet of distance. Third, we know there are six private, family-owned and operated homes and families that, per MPCA rules, are between two hundred feet and seven hundred feet. So, some live within one football field, the other remainder live just within two football fields or so. And not within the border of where their Niagara property is, but the truck lane. So, and then four, we know, lastly, sound diminishes over distance in a predictable way. So, you put all this together. So, one semi-truck operating on Niagara's proposed facility would generate, and I'll use the lower number in the range, eighty-two decibels at fifty feet. This sound would have to travel over eight hundred feet to attenuate or diminish below fifty-five decibels. So, if there's just one truck or a combination of trucks that are operating on the northern half of their facility, which is plausible, given where their loading bays are and they're parking for trucks, if, if there's just one truck operating for more than six minutes in an hour at night, there's good reason that it would violate state statutory limits. I'll be the first to admit, there's a lot of unknowns here. Many factors can either amplify or dampen noise. Grass, hills, embankments, walls, multiple trucks operating. However, given what we know, clearly this issue merits more study. Elko City Ordinance five dash five dash three C empowers the council at its discretion to require parties exactly like Niagara to submit a noise impact statement and provide it in a form that the, the council requests. I've, I've received a very helpful response from the city when I asked about this, and they said we hadn't requested one. And I'm quoting the response, "Prior studies conducted at their facilities have shown exterior noise levels at their plants to be at or below sixty-five decibels." I immediately responded and said that, given their twenty-four-hour operating plan, they need to meet the lower standard of fifty-five decibels from the perspective of where the residents hear that sound. And I haven't, I asked further, asked for further data and had further questions and haven't received a response. So, moving on to light. Elko City Ordinance six five bead dash four Q states, "Reflected glare or light from private exterior lighting?"
Real quick, I just want to, is anybody working on following up on the noise piece? Okay.
Okay. Elko, there's a city ordinance, as someone referenced, is there a city ordinance? I found one. "Reflected glare or light from private exterior lighting exceeding one-half-foot candle as measured on the property line of the property where the lighting is located when abutting any residential parcel is considered a public nuisance and a misdemeanor." I didn't have time to research this or pursue answers to my question, but I do know that Niagara's proposed site would be within city limits and that there are multiple homes and families abutting it. A well-lit parking lot is between two and five-foot candles of brightness. I don't have any technical benchmarks or measurements, but I have stood three hundred feet from an Amazon warehouse at night, which is likely comparable lighting. And that was the best-lit parking lot in the history of parking lots. So, I think cause for concern. So, I have, in wrapping up, I have three requests. First, I ask the city to act within its power to require Niagara to provide a noise impact statement for the proposed facility and that, that its format follow generally accepted industry standards for noise impact assessments. Second, I'd ask that the city generate some assessment of the outdoor lighting impact the proposed Niagara facility would have and how it would comply with applicable, applicable city ordinances. Third, I ask that the council, I ask that the council continue to table decisions regarding Niagara until a noise impact assessment and outdoor lighting assessment is available for review by the council and the public. Without them, there's not enough information to conclude that residents living close by will not be subject to noise and light levels above city and state regulated limits. In closing, if this project moves ahead, at least six homes and families will have the sound and light equivalent of a garbage truck with its high beams and floodlights on circling their block every six and a half minutes, every day, all day, and night. As people of faith, my wife and I try to love our neighbors as ourselves. This project is not something we would do to our neighbors. Thanks.
Well, you got to wait till after a seat, and then I'll do it. Hi, I'm Jody. I'm borrowing her minutes.
Okay, I, I want to let staff respond though to the last.
Okay, I'm just going to stand here and be quiet.
That's fine, please. Go ahead.
Brittany, do you have any items of response related to those items, especially, I think, the lighting aspect of it?
Yeah, especially related to lighting, a normal part of a site plan review is to require a lighting plan showing foot candle meter readings. Those are developed by a, they're electrical consultants. And we get them on all commercial projects. We got one on the QuickTrip in the strip mall that went in five years ago. That is part of our analysis. So, the type of fixture that they use, they project the foot candle meter readings at all areas around the property and, and they do need to comply with that part of the city code.
Why aren't there any ordinances though in the I-1 for that?
That's an overarching ordinance that applies throughout the city.
Okay.
It's just, it, it's not specifically contained in the I-1 section of the code. It's in a different section of the code, but it does apply to this development.
And they have to meet the half-foot candle where there's any residential parcel adjacent, correct?
A half or zero. I can look it up for you.
Can I just do a follow-up to that?
Sure.
Would this, would this be looked at or reviewed the same if it was all surrounded by city? So, not, you know, and maybe there's no difference if it abuts to township or, no, it doesn't matter.
All right. Thanks for your patience.
Hey, no worries.
Go ahead.
Okay, I'm Jody Lucas, two six five zero one Xerxes Trail. I'm married, a third-generation Elkoan. Grandpa's been here forever. I want to talk about undue harm to neighbors. These neighbors that I've met recently are amazing people. Want to talk about the commercial land in the city. We know it's commercial, love it. But what we put in there, we need to be more careful with. Silos, noise, light pollution, air pollution. When placing anything near neighbors, having green space between residential and the commercial should be mandatory. The nuisance law as a place is in place so that you and I can protect our rights to use and enjoy, I got big writing because I'm nervous, use and enjoy our land. Our neighbors should be able to do it as well. We are, we are Elko New Market, a farming community that was never meant to be a big suburb. Most of us moved here for that specific reason. We need to remember this. If there is another plan, if this doesn't go through, fine. But if there is another great plan, plan in place where some other plant comes in, I truly think that the whole community needs to vote on it, not just one single entity, because it does affect all of us. I mean, somebody in Old Elko who's on a well, their wells could go dry. They don't have access to water, so you're going to have to run piping up a hill. And there's, they're on a really weird septic system on top of the hill. You know, I mean, the city was piecemealed together. So, we just need to be very methodical. And I just want to leave you with this, and I don't know how Judy got the saying, but my mom used to say this to me all the time. Just because you can doesn't mean you should. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we just clarify for a second, the, the water up at Woodcrest? I mean, they can hook up, correct?
We do not have water service throughout Woodcrest. We have it at the boundary, but we don't have.
But we could, we could work.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
That's a different question.
Let's, let's stay on topic.
Thank you for your time this evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name's Janelle Kujna. I live at two six seven seven five Grand Avenue. So, where that is on this map, there is another set of residential homes here. I happen to live, two sixty-seventh runs here, and I happen to live south of two sixty-seventh. I understand that everything north of me was, in the 2040 Comprehensive Plan, was brought into urban reserve and is going to be, you know, you're looking at developing it industrial. However, I will point out that there are five residential properties to the south of two hundred and sixty-seventh, and I'd like you to consider, I'd like to know who's going to pay for my property value when it plummets next to an industrial park. We never received notification. We're New Market, we're a New Market Township residence. So, we never got your 2040 plan. It was never sent to our household. Why would I follow the city minutes of Elko New Market when I'm a township member?
Have you, have you spoken to your township board?
I, I plan to, but I've been a little busy with this.
Understood. We, we do send, send to them for comment.
Yes.
To advocate on that.
So, I second all of John Carlson's, the noise, the air pollution, the light pollution. I'd ask you to vote no on the preliminary plat, and here's why. Your city ordinance twelve dash nine dash eight requires that the city can require the developer to put up to eight percent of the usable space into a park. There is a hundred and nineteen acres, give or take, of usable space here. That means that close to twelve, eleven or twelve acres could be a buffer for the twenty homesteaded properties and this development. You could put some greenspace out there to buffer this. And you have the power to require Ryan to go back to the drawing table and produce a different plat. Second, in regards to the conditional use permit, sixty-five feet is almost thirty percent higher than your ordinance for fifty feet. It's going to be a nuisance. It's going to be what I look at out of my front door. Somewhere I read those silos have floodlights on them. If you look out my front door now, I see the black sky. Now, I'm going to see floodlights. And again, I remind you, I am not in the urban reserve. So, there is a value issue and an enjoyment issue and use issue to my property and the four neighbors that live, or five of us that live south of two sixty-seventh. The other thing someone asked me to talk about was, on your website, your business assistance policy specifically reads, "Business Assistant Project Approval Criteria." Number four, the assistance will not be provided to projects that have the financial feasibility to proceed without the benefit of the assistance. Assistance will not be provided solely to broaden a developer's profit margins on a project. Prior to consideration of a business assistance request, the city may undertake an independent underwriting, underwriting of the project to help ensure that they request, or the request for assistance is valid. So, I guess I would ask you all, this is a natural resource. Do we really have the right to sell a natural resource to an out-of-state company? Do we have that right? It doesn't just affect the people in this room. It affects a lot more people in outstate Minnesota, Wisconsin, Iowa, Michigan. You can say what you will about the aquifer, but I want you to think of it from an ethical standpoint. Do we have the power to make this decision? Is it ours? Thank you.
Who wants to go next? Anybody?
Mr. Mayor, Tom Wolf, Scott County Commissioner. I had a few comments, and I have, actually have been crossing some of them out as, as I've gone along. And, but one saying did come up tonight that I thought about was, whoever said whiskey was for drinking and water was for fighting, I think was probably correct. So, anyhow, I'm going to have a little bit of a different opinion here than everyone that has spoken before. From the county's standpoint, this is a great business, and they're a good family business. And it, there might be some things with resources and water. It, they're going to, they're going to bottle water somewhere. And Elko New Market, Scott County, needs businesses here. I knew I was going to get that. Anyhow, but the board as a whole, we fully support this. And, you know, we can deal with the traffic and the bridge. I, I talked to one resident out there, you know, they were concerned about the, the I-35 bridge. And I think it's February, we're going to go and talk at the whatever, and so we're going to try to get that ball moving and. Yeah. Hold me to what, pardon me. We're working on it. So, you know, things can move up in the schedule, and that's, you know, but we have to, you know, collectively have to fight for it and, and show a need. we have to, you know, collectively have to fight for it and, and show a need. So, but, um, the due diligence has been done here and, um, you know, we think it's a good project. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I want to talk on the bridge real quick and Bryce, you're welcome to jump in if you like, but, so we are part of I-35 Solutions, which is a group of cities and municipalities along 35. And we've been part of that for, gosh, I don't know, I've been on the council for 10 years, so it's probably gone back further than that. Bryce is currently our representative on that, and he's worked very hard to continue to push that up the ladder. We're starting to make progress. Honestly, I would love to see that, that interchange rebuilt before any development were to come, but that's not necessarily the way it's, has to work. So, um, I know at the planning commission meeting, there was, uh, there was some discussion about that bridge, um, and it was said that there wasn't a plan. There's a plan. We're just working hard to implement that plan and get that up on the radar of MinDOT so it can be addressed sooner rather than later. So Bryce, I don't know if you had anything you wanted to add?
Yeah, I, I, I would just say, well, thanks to Tom too, because he also serves on that committee and he has advocated for the replacement of that bridge as well. And the only other thing that I'll add is, you know, that, that committee has a whole list of projects throughout the metro and, um, the bridge is on a supported list. And the hope is, is that we can move that to a priority project rather than just a supported project so that we can get the infrastructure that's needed for the bridge.
So just a quick, uh, comment on that. I think that the city, by doing that, by forcing the development through in violation of their own zoning criteria, number five, traffic generation by the proposed uses within the capabilities of the streets. Remember that one?
Yep, thank you.
The city is gambling that if our bridge and roads-
I hate to cut you off.
-get bad enough, if they get dangerous enough-
Ms., you're taking time up from other people who still want to speak.
And I understand your point.
It's a gamble. I mean, I know that you guys are gambling that if it gets bad enough, then maybe it'll get late, it'll get moved up on the pro, the projects.
I appreciate your comments. Thank you.
But we'll, we're the ones that are gonna be paying for it, the safety issues.
I'm gonna have to ask you to stop. Thank you. Yep. Go ahead, Josh.
Yeah, can I just, I, I see Representative Koznick on here too, and I, I'm sure he's listening or has delegated maybe this to a poor LA, um, but, uh, I, I think our state reps and senators too, um, you know, this is where we ask for your help and, and where you guys can help with this. We've been trying for, I mean, over a decade probably. I've only been on council for eight years, but, um, they need to hear it. And Representative Koznick, for those of you that can't see in the chat, just gave a thumbs up, so, uh, he, he will hear and email and, and, you know, communicate with our, our state folks too, so we can, uh, push this forward.
And that's regardless of the Niagara project. I mean, this is something that needs to happen. This is, well, anyway, that speaks for itself. So with that, uh, who wants to speak next? If not, we have other people we can call on. Deborah Pexa.
If you laugh.
Okay. Brenda Harder? I'm not sure I'm pronouncing it right.
Is there a Brenda?
There's a Brenda, yeah. How about, how about Rebecca Peterson?
If you laugh.
Okay. Uh, is there a Colleen? I can't quite read the last name. How about Beth Ellers?
Is, is that from the hallway list?
Yeah.
Okay.
Anyone want to speak from out here?
That's probably the best approach, Tom. Please.
I will. Thank you for being here. Uh, my name is Colleen Picard. I live at 26730 Oak Ridge Way.
Thanks, Jen.
Thank you. And my talk is a little different. I grew up in northeast New Jersey. Um, when you turned the tap water on, the water came in the house from a, um, well, let's just say you turned it on, it tastes like chlorine, it smelled like chlorine, but the town did have a spring and residents were allowed to go to the spring and fill up jugs of water, which we did. Then trucks start pulling up and loading up bottle after bottle after bottle after bottle. And then the town decided, we gotta stop this. So they enclosed it in, um, concrete and put taps on it and every resident could get a key, which was a specialized wrench, to get the water. But somehow, people were still able to take water, way more water. They even had fines put up, they had police monitoring it. And you know what? 10 years ago, it went dry. No more spring water. And this spring was funded coming down from the Appalachian Mountains and it is bone dry. And I say, we've had droughts here, we've had water restrictions. We don't need somebody taking our water, spending three, four cents, whatever, per bottle and selling it for what, four bucks, five bucks a bottle? We don't need that. We do need progress. We do need companies coming in, you know, but not using our water. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one quick.
Yeah, come on up.
I'm Rob Chamberlain. I live on, uh, Beard Avenue. I just, I, I wish I could go back in time and be a fly on the wall. At these meetings around the Colorado River, the Ohio River, Lake Mead, as development occurred, did they have water experts stand up and say, everything's gonna be okay?
Fair enough.
That's all I got. Thanks, everybody, for coming back.
Thank you.
Stay until-
I'm Sandy McMillan, uh, 5846 East 260th Street in Elko. Um, yeah, so I hate public speaking, just to let you know, but we've been here for three hours, so here it goes. Um, what I wanted to say tonight was, I wish, um, everyone on the council could have hopped in my truck the other night, um, as I went door to door and collected signatures from residents wanting to sign the petition for further environmental studies. Um, the statements that they made to me, um, were heartbreaking. Things, uh, young families who had young children saying that they never would have moved to Elko if they knew that we would build, uh, a factory like this that, um, uh, use the water, use natural resources. They wanted to raise their children, um, in a city that, uh, valued, valued the environment. So water is our life source. I don't believe that the city wants this, uh, company to be their legacy. Um, so what I have to say tonight, our farmers and families first. Um, and on another note, uh, just sitting through, uh, the presentations, to try to process the fact that a CEO from a single-use plastic water bottling corporation who plans to siphon the city's water and ship it to Wisconsin, who didn't want their business in the first place, has got to be the most hypocritical thing I have ever sat through. Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Come on up.
Mr. Mayor, uh, council members, thank you for taking the time. I don't have a planned speech because I just kind of showed up tonight. My name's Linda Brown. I live on 270th Street, so I'm south of the project. But, um, real quick, some of my concerns have to do with, um, our road structure. Um, I didn't know until tonight that they plan to have all the vehicles exit to the south of the property and onto Pillsbury. And if you go out there and look at the road, Pillsbury's not, as it is right now, it's not, does not have the capacity to handle what they're talking about. Um, so that's a concern. These silos, these extra high silos, why are they putting on the south of the property where there's residents to the south? Why aren't they putting those on the front of the property? Who cares if it's an industrial park, um, and you're driving by on two? Why, why are they sticking them on the back end? Um, so that's a concern to me and I didn't, wasn't aware that they have lights on these silos, but I, you know, have this image of my property being all lit up from that. Um, one thing that I keep hearing here is a lot of financial. And I, I guess I'm just wondering, for the city, is there any other reason to allow them to do this other than financial? I know you have infrastructure that's been really expensive, that you've invested in, and it sure is enticing to think they would help, you know, pay for that burden, but let's think beyond that because, uh, what I heard, they'll quickly use up the capacity and, and we're just gonna have to put more money into more infrastructure. The, the other thing is, I, I'm not against businesses coming in, I think that's great, but I think we should look at something that's not gonna take advantage of our natural resources. Let's learn from Colorado, California, Nevada, and other states that are running out of water. I'm sure they didn't anticipate that that would happen in their community or their state. If you take a look around just now, the Minnesota River, the Mississippi River, uh, Lake Superior, if you've been up there, I mean, it's visibly like, you can tell there's a drought. So we can't really look to those resources for future water. Um, I find it interesting that the company was founded in California, but here they are in Minnesota in the Midwest, looking to take our water for profit. In closing, I'll, I'll just say, the property isn't currently zoned for this project. You'll have to do a rezoning, you know? As you all know, the buck stops with you. Just because a planning commission approved it, you still have the power to, to put the brakes on and say, wait a minute, um, we need to take further look at this and if this is a good fit for our community. Um, I don't think we should be romanced by Niagara's numbers into believing that they will only have a positive financial impact on our community. They're using our water resource to make a profit and there is a cost to our community. Um, thank you for your time and, uh-
Thank you.
Can you put up the drawing that I, uh, asked you about? Please?
We'll take just a second, Larry.
Larry Schofield, 11550 Deuce Road. This is, uh, Scott County parcel map and I did little drawings on it to highlight some details that maybe even some of the council members aren't aware of. I, I hope they are, but... So I'm directly across, if you look on that map, directly across those little boxes there, I'm the first, yeah, right there, he's indicating it. The X's around that are bigger parcels, but they're, uh, private homes, homeowners. So all of them are affected and all of those little boxes there are affected by this and I, more than anyone, directly across from it. So this proposed project is 425,000 square feet, huge building and the surrounding lot that, uh, if it's allowed, needs to be along I-35. Because that's where the immense lighting and, uh, and the noise and all that doesn't matter. But when you put it near that northeast corner where all those homes are, you're impacting a lot of citizens that have, I've been here for decades, never expected that Elko New Market was gonna come all the way across and affect my quality of life. Their proposal shows semis lining up along the east side of the building. You can see the arrows there. They come in from Dupont, I guess, circle around the south end, they are moving north, and at night their headlights are aimed directly at all of those homes on the north side of That simply can't be subjected. You can't be subjected to that kind of light and noise from truck movement 24 hours a day. Nothing has been discussed to address the negative impact on homeowners, not even as much as a high earth berm or sound barriers. I've heard nothing. Nothing from the developer, Ryan, nothing from Purple Rain, nothing from Niagara, nothing from the city. Am I wrong?
That's correct.
In addition, Ryan doesn't feel like putting in that one allowed access from Deuce Road before construction begins on Niagara. So that's to be toward the center of the, the development, as you can see. And what they want to do instead, they plan on getting Scott County to let them install a temporary access into the site at the extreme east property line, right in front of our homes on Deuce Road. Seriously, right in front of our homes. That's where they want to do it. That'd be, uh, what, heavy equipment and trucks going in and out during the entire construction season? And what I was thinking was spring, summer, what, three, four months? What I heard tonight, 2024 first quarter is when they think they'll go online? That's a long time for us to be subjected to that, that kind of traffic, right in our... So much for enjoying our yards this summer, huh? The only allowed access requirement is gonna have to be enforced and done first before any construction would be allowed to begin. Finally, council members, you have to consider more than just the, the drainage areas and the other technical issues that have been considered. Absolutely nothing, zero zilch, has been addressed regarding the established homes and the longtime township residents who now are the redheaded stepchild because we're not, we, we, we have no pull with you guys. We can't vote you out. The project cannot move forward as proposed. By the way, when you earlier were, you tabled those resolutions, you confused everyone back there because you stated that there was no more hearings that was done at the zoning meeting? Three-fourths of that move, of that room got up and left. Congratulations and cutting them down.
That was not the intent, but yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Who would like to speak next? Come on up.
Um, hi there. My name is Cameron McMillan, um, 5846 East 260th Street, and I'm 15 years old and I have been, and I'm a second-generation resident of Elko New Market, and I am concerned about what our community is doing with the Niagara bottles. Being a second generation, I'm grateful to be growing up in this town, but many generations that come after me might not have that chance due to pollution of our water and of our air and with the plastic bottles. We, as a community, don't want this and we, you guys represent us. We voted you in and none of you guys would have been here without us. So I ask of you, please do not let this go through for the generations to come, for the U, for the residents of Elko New Market. I beg of you, please do not, for, just please don't. I'm gonna yield my time.
Thank you. Is there anybody else wishing to speak?
I have a quick question for Renee and Tom about, um-
I don't see anyone else coming up, so I might as well. I don't want repeats, but-
About truck lights. Were there any plans in Ryan's planning for that or not?
The truck lights from the Niagara site, uh, I think would be better addressed by Niagara. Um, they're really responsible for their site development. Ryan is conveying them a lot. Um, tonight, they're, during their presentation, they did indicate that there is some green space on the north side of their site between, uh, their parking, uh, and parking facilities and County Road 2, that they are considering, um, well, they will need to do tree, tree replacement on their site and that may be the likely location for it in order to provide screening to the north. that may be the likely location for it in order to provide screening to the north.
All right, last call for anyone in person, otherwise we'll then go to online. Okay. For folks that are with us online, if you could, if you care to speak, could you please raise your hand?
In order to do that, if you are participating through the Zoom application, go to the bottom of the screen where it says reaction. If you push that button, there will be a raise your hand button that will indicate that you wish to speak and we'll be able to identify you. Thank you.
Lisa, I see your hand is raised. Can we unmute Lisa?
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Lisa, you are unmuted and you can speak at this time?
Yep.
I wasn't able to be there tonight because I'm not feeling well, but I live at 11620 next to Larry, who came up and spoke, and John, who also came up and spoke. And I spoke at the last meeting, and I just want you to know that if you get a chance to live next to some kind people that you care about, which doesn't happen all that often, to live next to people that take care of you and you moved to this place not knowing anyone, and you moved because you wanted to be in the country, and then now you have this company that comes in and takes everything away. It's so sad, the stress that you've put us all through in this corner and to know that I'll lose my neighbors over a bottling company. Like, that's fine, build your stuff, come and put a hardware store and a grocery store that the people really want, but let me go and find property next to my neighbors and help me. But the fact that what you're doing to us to listen to the noise and these semi trucks, I can't express to you, if you don't get it, come over. I will let you sit in my living room, I will let you sleep where my kids sleep and listen to those J breaks all night long. It's not funny. You're messing with people's lives who really want to be here, who really chose you all to be in for the council, and we are hoping that you will listen, just do the right thing. I don't know how you can sleep at night if you don't. I know I can't, and I wanted more than anything to be there tonight so that you could see me in person to know that I am a human being, and my neighbors mean the world to me, and for you to take that away isn't fair. I just really hope that you all really think about what you're doing to Elko. You have other places to move this, and it's not worth the money, it's not worth the water to lose all of it, it's just not. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Is there anybody else online? If there is, please raise your hand. I'm just scrolling through, I don't see any hands raised.
There's Ben H. and then an unidentified iPhone, Mr. Mayor.
Well, let's go with Ben H. first.
All right. Thank you very much. Can you hear me?
Yes.
We can, Ben.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. My name is Ben Helgeson. I live in Cedar Lake Township. A couple of questions maybe to start off. I'm not sure if it was, if it was said earlier on, but a question regarding Niagara and some of the summer water restrictions that residents have had to deal with. Will Niagara be subjected to those same water restrictions during summer months?
No, commercial and industrial users, institutions are not subject to the same watering restrictions. I think I will defer the remainder of that question to the city engineer to talk about why we have conservation measures in place with regards to the management of our system.
It's simply about shaving peaks out of the usage during the.
Microphone.
It's on.
Yeah, you gotta get closer.
My apologies.
Watering restrictions are about shaving peak use so that we spread the use out. It's easier on operations and it allows us to not design as big of plants or to delay expansion of facilities. So it's not about scarcity, it's about operations and investment.
So with large peaks.
Isn't that all the more reason to put those restrictions, or at least apply those restrictions, to what Niagara be as a continued or a continuous high peak?
So our institutions and industrial users tend to be very uniform users, especially something like this. It's a kind of a more constant withdrawal. What we're talking about watering restrictions because it's watering. It tends to all happen at the same time if it's not regulated. By going to odd even, then it gets spread out at least somewhat.
Do you have any other questions?
I do, I do.
Please go ahead.
A question related to Niagara and their wanting to be a good partner to the community and things like that. We talked about a few things related to potential requests and changes to the ordinance based on different usage levels or capacity, or I don't remember exactly. My question would be, you know, what kind of influence would we as residents, or even the city council for that matter, expect almost from a lobbying standpoint to get things in place or passed that would have direct benefits to Niagara? How much pull are they going to have once they get in with their facility? So maybe something to think about. The other bit I wanted to bring up, we talk a lot about the water, and it's absolutely a huge concern. We haven't really talked a lot about the plastic. I did a little bit of math, or was trying to do a little bit of math, as we've been talking through this, and they're using 300 million gallons a year, and they've got a 90% efficiency with the water. Think about how many water bottles that turns into. That's, that can be 6 million water bottles per day, potentially. Think about that. And those don't all get recycled. Those end up on the side of the streets. I don't know how we can consider ourselves a good community steward by supporting that kind of waste. And the last thing I'll bring up is, the petition that went around after the November 29th meeting got, I think, almost 10% of the Elko Newmarket population to sign it. And that was within a 48 to 72 hour time window, when probably the majority of residents didn't even know that this was moving forward. Extrapolate that a little bit. It's not just the people in the room, it's not just the people who send emails, it's not just the people on the phone. We don't want this. This isn't the right investment for our community. And I ask that you both note on anything that relates to moving Niagara forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Okay, there's someone with the iPhone that we're going to unmute if you can state your name and address for the record.
Yes, hi, my name is Brittany Roush, 11436 Deuce Road, directly across the street from where this is going in. You know, my one, really my biggest question, my biggest concerns have to do with the plastics. I understand Niagara is using what's known as P E Ts, which is one of the better plastics that's, yes, you can absolutely use. My biggest concern is, do we know, it's more towards Niagara, the question I have is, do we know who their suppliers are for their plastics? The reason I want to know this is because, yes, most P E Ts, when they're melted down at a certain temperature, no, they do not release any kind of toxin into the air. However, there are P E Ts out there that are supplied by different suppliers, and there's no 100% guarantee that there's not phthalates or any different other kind of contagions that are within these plastics. Are they able to either A, let us know who their suppliers are and guarantee us that there's no phthalates that are being leached from their P E Ts? And B, the biggest, my biggest, like I said, when they melt down these plastics, they are telling us that there's no emissions into the air and all these kinds of things, what are they doing with the air that goes into the building? It doesn't just stay there. Again, really only a concern if there are phthalates within these P E Ts, to me anyway at this point, seeing that I am directly across the street from this building going up. Those are my only questions. Thank you.
Is there any of our folks from Niagara, is that something you care to address?
So, the long and short of that answer is, it's a question for our procurement department because I don't know exactly which resin suppliers we would be utilizing to service Elko Newmarket. I know we procure resin from a variety of large producers, Dax and others across the U.S., but again, I don't know who exactly would supply this location. I would also add the caveat that there's a difference, I guess, between what our purchase contract stipulates as far as quality, and there could be some unidentified breach that the supplier's supplying a plastic that doesn't adhere to the quality specifications that we've mandated in our contract. When we would find out about that is a question. So I mean, it's impossible to guarantee with absolute certainty, even if I could identify the suppliers tonight, that there's never going to be an instance where there's some errant contaminant in the stream. But I will tell you, we have very strict purchasing standards from both our QA department and our procurement team, so certainly not in our best interest, again, to be purchasing something that would be detrimental and therefore erode our brand.
Thank you.
So that helps answer the question a little bit.
W. Diaz?
Good evening, council. Thank you very much. My name is Wesley Diaz. I'm a small business owner in Webster Township. Just a quick couple of questions for you. I know that you may have received quite a few emails recently, you know, a whole host of questions, just in regard to how you plan to answer those, or will there be a plan to get responses out to those people that have asked those questions? And then kind of my second question was, has there been a study on the amount of carbon dioxide that will be produced with the introduction of all those trucks from Niagara? I believe it's 223 tons per year, so I don't want to do the math, but again, that was just another question, has there been a study on that kind of environmental impact, especially with those houses that are so close and with the beautiful community that we have? So again, thank you very much for allowing me to get those questions out to you. Thank you.
Thank you. So with regards to the questions that have been asked via emails, I know myself, I've been woefully behind on trying to respond to every email. There's been quite a bit of them. I know city staff, Renee, Tom, Jake, have been trying to reply to emails. I would assume council members are as well. You know, I don't think we're letting questions go into a black hole or just, due to the volume of the questions coming at us, we're just trying to respond to them as quickly as possible. Does anyone disagree with that, or? Josh?
No, I was just going to say, when I'm getting the emails, again, I'm not the smart one in the room, so assuming that it's to a variety of folks on there, to staff and whatnot, you know, I'm taking all the information in, trying to boil it down for my brain to be able to make decisions. So if you're looking for technical answers or questions, answers, whatever, make sure you include more than me, I guess is what I'm trying to say this late at night. But we're receiving them and we're absorbing them, and we all have different roles to play on this team to kind of figure out where they go.
So we're doing the best we can to address those questions. In terms of the carbon piece.
No, we're not, we haven't done, nor are we planning to do a study. The volume of traffic is not extremely high or inconsistent. The larger question of semi trucks and how much they produce isn't within the scope of our analysis for this project. That's a larger societal question.
Rebecca Holden. Oh, she's still muted.
Can you unmute her?
Rebecca?
Rebecca, you will need to unmute yourself.
Need a little check back. Rebecca, Rebecca, if you can hear us, are you able to unmute yourself? Well, I see, we see a video on, but it looks like you're still muted. Okay, yeah, we're not able to unmute you, we just have to request that you unmute yourself, so. All right. Last call. Is there anybody else? You can. Yeah, it's, yeah.
Just a couple of more things that I wanted to, Tom Terry was nice enough to have a conversation with me at 7:30 this morning, and here we are at 11:30 tonight, still speaking. He, I asked Tom about the water supply plan, and I understand that you guys are working on updating that. And I asked if there would be some sort of public hearing or comment and time for the public to review those updates that were required by the DNR and for a larger discussion to be had on that. So just, it's a question for you guys to consider. And then also, I understand that there may be some enhancements to the city utility ordinance. Now, it doesn't affect me in Newmarket Township, but I think there's quite a few people in the city that would be interested in what those changes are. And also, per my conversation with Tom today, you know, whether you're going to sign a contract with Niagara or enhance those city utility ordinances, I'm asking that there's a larger discussion about that for the people of Elko Newmarket. And then just in general, because of the public interest in this particular development, not only for those of us that live over there, but also because of the nature of the industry that's being asked to be in there, I would ask that you consider a public forum where everyone's allowed to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. In terms of the enhancements, I'm not sure I'm following what was being referred to.
So the staff is currently taking a look to see if there are any amendments, adjustments, enhancements to the existing utility ordinance that would be necessary related to having such a large user. Our ordinance was designed to basically reflect a predominantly residential community.
Is this the ability to draw and like permitting?
Potentially permitting or other elements, making sure that we reinforce priority allocation at the time of supply constraint and things like that. And so we're still in that process of looking at it. And I'd had a conversation this morning with Janelle on the topic.
Okay. In terms of having a wider discussion, it's a good point. I mean, this is, we're just kind of talking through this now. I certainly wouldn't be opposed to having it be a topic at one of our workshops or some sort of public engagement. I'm certainly not opposed to that, but I think that's something we'll need to talk through, but yeah, thank you. Rebecca, are you back with us? Maybe.
There should be a dialogue box in the middle of her screen that says unmute, okay, or cancel, I think.
Maybe in the meantime, we check with Jake Strand.
Hey, can you guys hear me?
We can hear you, Jake.
Hey, thanks for taking the time to do this tonight. I'm at 1028 Teresa Marie Drive. My wife and I and our almost five-month-old moved here end of February, so not even a year here, and I'm not going to focus on like Niagara and the water. I think that's been talked enough about, but I think you guys would maybe appreciate a different perspective just kind of from my experience and what I do for work. So one thing that caught my attention was, you know. So one thing that caught my attention was, um, you know, the need to bring in local employment. So I travel a ton for work. I would say on average, I'm commuting at least an hour anywhere I'm going. And I'm happy to do that. I would be happy to do that for another 100 years if that would keep Niagara out of it. I'll just leave it at that, but, um, my point is, I'm on the road far earlier than most people are. So I know the one guy talked about his traffic study, the updated one, which was good. And I think the traffic study started around, what was it, 7:00 AM every day they were starting to look at traffic? Is that right? Around 7?
Was it 7? I thought it was 6, 6:00 AM.
Okay, so I'm on the road typically at 5:00. I don't know if you guys have, whoever's on the road at 5:00, but what I'm trying to get at is, at 5:00 AM, I get onto 35 and I'm seeing trucks parked already on the on and off ramps onto 35 whether north or south. I go south on 35. The rest area is full of trucks. They've got trucks already on the on ramp or off ramp up to the road. I drive past Flying J. That's full of trucks. This is just going south. This doesn't even include going north. Now we're gonna break Niagara into it. And I got one more caveat for you. So there's gonna be trucks coming in all the time. There's already trucks parked on the on ramps and off ramps at 4:00, 5:00, 6:00 AM. They're not gonna be able to handle all of, you know, they can't park every truck in there at any minute, right? My other, the other thing that I have going for me is, and I don't know if anybody else can say this, is I actually worked for a third-party logistics company about six years ago and one of our main customers was Niagara. Interesting experience. They were essentially, the facility was in Georgia. And if you talk to any single trucker that had to go to a Niagara facility in Georgia, they were, they were not happy about it. Robots were broken down. They couldn't get their loads picked up or delivered. It was a disaster and they can't just sit on site waiting for the loads. They gotta sit somewhere. That goes back to my same point. What are we gonna do when we've already got these existing trucks sitting on the on ramps, off ramps? Now we're gonna add in all the Niagara traffic. Where are all those trucks gonna go? Who's gonna enforce the trucks sitting on Highway 2? Who's gonna enforce the trucks sitting on, I don't know, 35 residential streets? Where are they gonna go? I don't know if anybody's actually thinking about that. And the traffic study starts at 6:00 AM and I'm seeing this at 4:00 or 5:00 AM. So just something to, to think about. Again, I don't know if a lot of people have had experience with Niagara, but from a third-party logistics perspective, it wasn't great. Niagara was not paying the drivers or not, the, what they were paying for loads was very, very low. The morale from the drivers was really bad. And as much as they want to hype it up, um, I can say from my experience, it's not worth the hype. So those are my thoughts. Thanks.
Thanks, Jake. Kao? You able to unmute yourself? Going once. Going twice. Okay. Anybody else care to?
So I got a response on the light pollution. I didn't hear a response on sound or noise for people living directly adjacent.
Yeah. Who wants to tackle the sound?
I'd like to do more research, research.
So follow-up, okay?
Sure.
Can you follow up with all of us that live out there?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think maybe the best way would be, well, I'm just trying to think logistically how to get, the best way to do that. Maybe if we can get, well, you're John Carlson, right?
Yes, I am.
I know I have your email address because I believe I've got an email, an email from you.
You have.
And, right, it's Janelle, right? Yep. So it's two people I know.
You probably don't have mine. I live Elko.
You know what, maybe when we wrap this up, we can write down some email addresses and, and approach it that way. So...
And I guess I would just add, there may or may not be questions at a follow-up meeting that we could address this publicly as well.
That sounds good. All right. Let's call him, Wesley. Wesley, I think you're gonna be our last speaker for the night.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Sorry to take up a little bit of your time. Just wanted to follow up on that last person. I have done some research and have worked with the DNR regarding the 70/30 law. From what I understand is Scott County can request, um, can request instruments to monitor sound and they should be, they should be readily available. So I think that can be done via Scott County and pretty, done pretty easily. I have been involved with a sound test that was done in Apple Valley regarding Pickle Wall. And again, that was done relatively inexpensively and pretty quickly. So there is an option to get a sound test done out there, but I would also like to, you know, just refer back to the comment that was made about the pollution. Don't you think that that is, uh, something that is being brought to, to the county and to the area? And not a wider world problem or a wider, wider issue, I think, you know? Would you like to clarify that? 223 metric tons, or you know, that's gonna go through that gentleman's house as they turn out there. So I think it is viable to have a study done on those environmental and pollution. You know, you've got families there, young children. Would you, you'd expect it if it was coming through the town. So again, I would respectfully ask that you do follow up on that and there is studies that can be done. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Late hand came up for Brian Jones. I really don't want to cut anyone off that has waited so patiently and wants to talk. Brian?
Well, hey Joe, thanks for letting me have a chance to talk. So I'm coming into the meeting late, didn't get to hear everything that's been previously said, but I did just want to say, it seems like there's a pretty big, you know, um, you know, I would say there's more than just a economic cost to having this, this company build this plant here. There's people that clearly are personally impacted by, by putting it next, next to their house that are very frustrated and upset about it. And so I know from the city's standpoint, they could be viewing it as, oh, we're getting development, we're getting some tax dollars, but I kind of feel like it's not worth it. If you got so many people so upset about it, you know, we can just pay some more taxes if we need to, if we, if... I think I saw that the city was only getting like 50 grand a year or something and and I know the people on city council, and I'm friends with several of them, that you guys know, like, that's a pretty small amount of that, even if it's 100 grand, whatever it is, like, that's like peanuts in the grand scheme of things. You guys could just, we could all vote to raise our taxes a little bit to make up the difference if it means we would alleviate a lot of the issues that people are, are having with building this plant here. And the other thing I'll say is, I find it interesting that we have this company from California wanting to target the upper Midwest to build plants here when they're running out of water in that part of the country. So they're coming to this part of the country, going to these smaller towns, going after us, trying to get us to approve these plants. And, and I was just gonna make a recommendation for Niagara that, you know, I'm originally from Ohio and if you guys really want to find a, a kind of a better place to build a plant, go to the city of Toledo where I'm from. And the Mississippi, or the, I'm sorry, the Mommy River is the biggest river in the Great Lakes. Build your plant in the Marina District right there in downtown. And you can get probably less taxes, more water. People are willing to work for less there. And you can have railways right there to ship your bottles. And that would be a better solution actually than building it here. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Mr. Mayor, was that a motion to blanket raise taxes?
It was not a motion. All right, Kao, we'll try you one more time. No luck? I'm sorry, Kao, we're not able to get you unmuted. So, well, with that, I think we'll close the public hearing at 11:40. Thank you all for your patience. I know this has been a long night and many have left, but thank you all. I appreciate it.
So, Mr. Mayor, I was gonna have a question about the hearing. Earlier in the meeting, it was stated that we were going, likely going to be continuing the hearing to Tuesday. I'm just curious about how that might have been interpreted by people that attended earlier and might have left.
Yeah, well, that's a fair point. Yeah, I suppose we would have to continue.
I looked straight over at Andrea. I mean, is there anything from your perspective, the city attorney's perspective, related to maybe what was implied slash discussed versus us closing it now?
No, you're not required to have a public hearing on those items. So it's...
Well, and let me rephrase. Are you, you're, you're stating, and make sure I'm thinking clearly at this hour too, that it might have been interpreted that we were planning on a public hearing, this public hearing, to continue until Tuesday?
Correct.
And now we've wrapped, wrapped up testimony.
Individuals where it was getting late thought, well, I'll just come back on Tuesday.
Yeah, so if, if folks got the impression that there was going to be a public hearing because we made that...
Yeah, I feel like we have an obligation.
Thank you.
So what you would do is, if the council wanted to continue it, you would simply make a motion to continue the public hearing to Tuesday at 5:00 PM?
I'll move.
Second.
Motion by Kate, second by Amanda, in favor.
Aye.
Aye. All right, the public hearing is continued to Tuesday at 5:00 PM. That concludes the public hearing, so all reports were written. So we'll just go right to discussion by council. Nothing there, motions?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Amanda, second by Bryce, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Means adjourn. Thank you, everybody.